I'm going to have her.
Ready?
Please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
I'm here.
Member Elizabeth Jolen.
Here.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, I've asked Sheila to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. How about instead of I saying a prayer or not, I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence just with all the things that are going on with Israel and Gaza and everything. So let's, can we bow our heads for just a moment of silence, please? Okay, thank you. All right, council, any requests for deletions or emergency additions? You?
Is this the appropriate time to talk about pulling things off the consent agenda?
It could be if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I just have a couple. I just wanted to chat about a poll for discussion, tab 10 and tab 14 on the consent agenda. Hold on a second. Yeah.
All right, 10 and 14. Okay, John, we're okay, though. I mean, this is the time to do it.
Just for future, you can do it now, or also when I introduce the consent agenda, you can pull it then as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so 10 and 14?
What were those numbers, 10 and?
Yeah, 10 and 14, just for discussion.
Okay. All right, Henry?
Yes, I want to pull 13 and 9. And I have, just by chance, I also had 14 on my list here to pull from the consent agenda.
Okay. Henry, okay. Anybody else? Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would like to have a brief discussion about items on the agenda, additions, the additions that were put on last night.
Okay.
Okay?
Where would we do that?
Do you want to do it now?
We do it, we do it under mayor, council, community.
If there's going to be a proposal to move them or remove them at all, we should have it now during the additions, deletions.
All right, well, Vice Mayor, there you got it for Mr. Quay.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a couple of suggestions. And because this is the first time we're trying this new two-day meeting situation, I'd like to ask that the, actually, Elizabeth, they're yours, the seven you put on, they're very important, but I'd like to move them to the end of our meeting on Thursday instead of backing us up tonight because we have a full agenda. And I'd also like to ask that we change our code or our new procedure and make it so at least we give our staff some time to get these together. I think 24 hours is not enough time. I think the staff should, we should stop, add on 72 hours out. And if there's more than one item being added, I think it should be a majority of the council. If that makes sense to everybody? Yes, no?
Okay.
So wait, could you break those down? Because you just said a lot.
Okay, the first thing is the seven things that were added to move them to Thursday, after we take care of land, because we have such a huge book, if that's agreeable to everybody. Because you want a brief description, I think, of where we're at on those projects, correct?
Brief update, right.
Okay, in our, in my world, there never is a brief update. So if we could move them till after we take care of stuff that is going to back us down, then I think it would be easier, because it is a lot of items, and there are things that need to be talked about on those. So I'm asking just to move them to Thursday.
And you know what? On that note, it's certainly something that could be done through an email, that like any kind of update on projects.
Yeah, 100%.
And I don't know if that's possible for the manager to do that tomorrow. I know that might be putting a lot of pressure on someone, but.
We could, I, sure, because I've had everybody here ready to speak, so we can, we can put together one group email and send it to all of you. Well, answers to all of them together.
That would be great. And then if that is satisfactory to everyone, and if that could be included for Thursday meeting, then we can have, if I have any questions, if anyone has any questions about that, that'd be great.
Follow-up, okay.
And what about the, ending the 24 hours to add stuff, back it up to like at least 72? Because I didn't see that stuff till, excuse me?
Can you comment, please?
Oh, okay.
I was actually just going to follow up on that, too, just to see if there was direction, because that would, I would need to, obviously, I could bring back a resolution, but I'd need to make a revision to the policies, which I can do. So I was just going to ask the same thing that Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Mahoney was asking.
Do we have to vote on that, or?
No, if there's a consensus, I can, I can bring it back, and then you'll vote on it during the resolution process.
It just gives everybody more time, if that's agreeable. So you can't call 24 hours before the meeting and add on stuff, at least 72 hours. And then if you have a whole bunch of stuff you want added on, I think it should be consensus of the council that, you know.
I think that's a little vague, the whole bunch of stuff. What do you?
Well, seven items is a lot of stuff. So I meant more than one, maybe. If you want, like you wanted to talk about all seven of those, then, you know.
So what I was looking for is, and you know what? I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. So that was in response, the pattern that I see that happens here on the dais, we give direction, and then it just, these directions sort of go into the ether, which is no fault of, I'm not placing blame, but, you know, perhaps there's another way to track the direction that we're given. I was particularly, yeah, so, excuse me, there might be a better way for us to keep track of what we're asking the staff to do. I don't know what that looks like. We're obviously experiencing some administrative change, but that doesn't mean that if we spend the time up here to have long conversations about items, that we shouldn't have some way of tracking how the progress is happening.
Thank you. I got popcorn.
Okay, so, John, can you, you understand? So we all, do we all understand?
Well, I have just a little to add. I have been wanting to take advantage of the 24-hour thing. I process my agenda materials and prepare for a meeting perhaps a little differently than other people do. And I won't get into all details, but what I would ask is, would you consider splitting the difference at 48 hours? Because I just, I like to, sometimes things come up late. I get phone calls, emails, and so forth, and it kind of jumps out there. Other people look at the agenda and call me and say, hey, maybe we should talk about this. So if it doesn't work, I would be fully open to go into the 72. So is that acceptable to start? Thank you.
Yeah, that's acceptable to me as well. It doesn't address the sort of update on what happens between here, between the direction we give it this meeting and the next meeting. So, you know, that was my intention, to get an update on these things that are just outstanding. And I'd love to see how we can address that.
Henry, are you okay?
So we're at 48 hours now?
I, can I just jump in real quick? So the issue, potential issue is, if the deadline is after Friday, it's Monday anyway. So if you make it, if you make it on Saturday or make it on Sunday, that's, that's the same as Monday. I mean, you can do whatever you want. I'm just telling you the difference between, I mean, if the cutoff is on Friday and the staff can prepare everything and get it out, it's fine. But if it's on Saturday or Sunday, you're not going to get it till Monday, anyway. So however you want to do it, I just want to make sure you're all understood.
You could say.
If you split the difference, you're talking the weekend, as long as our meetings are on Tuesdays.
You could say two business days or something like that. I mean, we don't have to decide it tonight, obviously, it's going to come back.
Okay, yeah, if we're going to vote on it later, I think we've kind of got the conversation started, and we'll, we can get into the details.
While we're on that subject, are we going to wrap this thing up at nine or 9:30?
I'd go for eight if you want.
9:30, 10.
I got, I got one nine, I can tell that right now. I got a nine. Anybody else?
Yeah, sure, nine, great.
Nine?
Nine, sounds good.
Okay, fine, we have two, I may three. Thank you very much, nine o'clock it is.
And then, and then, you know, going back to the notion that we have long discussions about items and that just go nowhere, how would we like to address that?
I don't understand.
So we give direction items, and that's the list of things that I, that I wanted an update on. They're, it's all direction that we've given, and I'd like an update on that, that sort of thing, as the public should have an update. We spend quite a bit of time chatting about lots of things that then go nowhere.
Why don't we look at maybe doing something like having a monthly bulletin sent to us where they are on things we talked about? I would put a big chalkboard up and put the items on there, carry it across, but that's me. But why don't we look at maybe thinking of having a monthly update on everything that's been discussed in that month? That might solve your problem. So, and I understand what you're saying about, we talk about stuff, and it just vanishes.
No one else has a problem with, no one, no comments?
Well, I agree that we should be tracking the instruction that we give to the staff. And, you know, I think when we talk about it, we have our own ideas about how they can proceed with it. We have no idea what's on their plate, what comes up, you know, what their loads are. And so I don't know where to go after suggesting having a tracking system. But we certainly need to be fair to the staff, to give them an adequate opportunity to process whatever we ask, in addition to doing all the other stuff we pile on them, in addition to doing all the stuff that comes in off the street. So it's a little difficult to say each week, we're going to get an update on each item. Each item is different. But I agree, it needs to be tracked and monitored, but I just, I don't know quite how to do that tonight.
Well, we'll bring that up maybe at another meeting. So what I'm hearing you say is that we'll get these updates tomorrow, or on Thursday at the end of the meeting, since we, this is a new thing, and I would like to get an update on these things. Thursday at the end of the meeting, and then moving forward, we'll change our, our pattern.
I think Maria has something to say.
[snoring]
Sounds like my back.
Since I'll be potentially moving into the interim position for a little while, one thing we used to have was like an action list, it was an after items action list, through the managers, that got eliminated. But Ed, you remember, and Mary used to keep that updated. I'm guessing that's something you'd like to see returned, and then certainly if there is a new manager, they should be encouraged to continue the practice. And what that would do is by department, we'd have the different assignments by council and then a status. And we would try to provide that in the agenda books for each meeting.
That's great.
So I can certainly, you know, work with Mary, since she was kind of the expert on that, and see if we can get that going again.
Thanks.
Okay, Maria, thank you, because I think you did that for us in 2020. When we got our agenda book, we had an action item on there of the items that were the previous meeting.
Right. And it was an ongoing list. Some things were on there for a long time, but at least we knew, you know, what was outstanding, so.
Great suggestion, thank you.
All right, thank you. Henry, you had something you want to say?
Yes, I want to add on the fills.
Okay.
An item.
What do you mean, add on the fills?
I want it on the agenda.
Tonight?
Not necessarily tonight, it can be Thursday just as well. I just want to, if we have time.
But that doesn't work that way, because we, because we have an understanding right now that we can add things to this agenda 24 hours in advance. We no longer actually do the emergency additions and deletions unless someone's house is on fire.
If we're talking about Thursday, we're within that limit.
I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way either. Maybe, John, you could talk about, to speak to that.
Yeah, the way.
As much as I, too, want to talk about the fills.
Okay.
But.
I'd say, yeah, the way, the way that the current meetings are set up is that they are, they're one agenda, and anything that doesn't get heard on Tuesday flows over to Thursday. So it would need to, it would really be considered addition to the agenda, not, not the day. So it's, it's the agenda. So it would need to be added, if it was going to be added, it would have to be added under the emergency provision, if there's, if this was an emergency.
Okay, so can we give Henry an answer? Can he bring this up Thursday or not?
Well, it's up to you all. I mean, he's requesting it of the council. Your procedures say that if it's an emergency, it can be. So it's up to the council if they want to add it or not. It's entirely up to you. You control the agenda.
If there's consensus, then he can, he can add it.
It's up to you, yes.
All right. Okay, so.
I would be fine with it after, at the end. If it doesn't push anything else already on the agenda, does it push it back? We have time at the end? Fine.
I want the project moving, and that's the only way I can do it. So that's where I am on that, so.
Just can't help but just insert, the reason that we put this in place was so that we didn't, and I know this is not what you're doing, Henry, but so that, that the staff can prepare, the community can prepare, and the council can prepare for intelligent conversation about the items. So it, you know, that's why we have this 24-hour rule, and what I'm now hearing us all have just agreed to, is that we're going to do it 48 hours in advance. So as, so that's all.
Okay.
If we have time, I ask your indulgence to have the fills on there so I can get going with a lot of people as they're in motion. And that's all, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Just for discussion? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he.
Okay.
Okay, Henry.
Can, if you all do add it, can we, can staff get clarification so we make sure that the right people are here to answer whatever the questions are, the issues are that you're looking for?
Okay, all right. If it doesn't get added, then it'll be added to a future meeting, Henry.
Yeah, we could always, we can, we could certainly add it to the December 12 meeting. Not a problem, that's not an issue, yeah.
Okay. So I'll make, let me be clear, are we talking about 24 hours, 48 hours, two, two working days?
Currently, it's 24 hours before the agenda, currently, it's 24 hours before the, the start of the meeting. And this council, we consider the Tuesday, Thursday to be one meeting and one agenda. So we really base it upon Tuesday's date.
Okay, that's fine.
But if it, so it's up to you all, if you're going to add it under the emergency circumstances, under your policy. If not, I can, I can add it to the December 12 meeting now as a discussion item, I can go into our system and do it right now.
Henry, you want to just do that, or?
Yes, so I'm within the limitation right now to add it on to the December 12 meeting.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'll, so I'll put that on right now, not a problem. Okay. I didn't know, I didn't realize what you're asking. Yes, December, December 12, not an issue.
All right, then that takes care, we can take that off the list. Okay. All right, so anything else? Okay, so we're good with that. We'll move on then to reports and presentations, and I think the first one is a, is Henry is going to talk about Publix and the reusable bags.
For several years, I have been promoting to do away with the plastic bags in the stores here. Not necessarily Publix, but Publix is, is the main provider. I happen to have the opportunity to take somebody to lunch, works for Publix, he's not the manager of Publix, he oversees the managers. And they suggested that I would, they would attempt to put out a bag that carries your groceries and give them away. The two attorneys got together, one from here and one from Publix, and the main part of the contention for the bags was the emblem. They worked it out and got it done. These bags arrived a couple days ago, there's a thousand of them, and they're going to give them away. When people want the plastic bags, they might suggest that, and that's part of their, their job to suggest that. I'm very happy to say that the person who I work with is Kevin, and is it Viola, is it, where's the lady, excuse me?
Vivian.
Vivian, thank you. They represent Publix, and I would like you to stand up, please, because you did a big job. Just stand up, let anybody see you. Anyway, here's the bag. They're going to be given away for free to anybody that desires them, preferably in place of plastic bags. On this side is our emblem, and on the other side, it says, "Help Reduce Plastic, Let's Do a Good Job Together." And there's the other side, and they're big bags. So they're going to be, they're in the, in the store as we speak. This is not the final movement on my part, but the door is open, which is the most important thing. So public, I can't say enough. Kevin, you want to say where's too?
Come on up to the mic, if you would, please.
I just wanted to thank everybody for letting us be here today. We did bring a box of bags to hand out to everybody here in attendance, so, but we appreciate the conversation, Henry, and look forward to working together moving forward.
I appreciate that. Well, once again, give him another nice hand.
Is it okay, we hand them out real quick?
Absolutely.
Don't forget the council.
The Vice Mayor was already saying she was going to take Henry's bag.
She was. Snitching on me.
Okay, very good.
Okay, all right. So why they're doing that, can we have, let's see, Richard Clark, Monroe County, tab one? Can we have you get ready?
I'm as ready as I'm going to be.
All right.
Okay, well, I am going to move relatively quickly through the presentation. We're not going to get into the weeds. I left my card up here. If anybody has any questions, I'm, I drive up and down the Keys every day, it's what I do. So if anybody wants me to just sit down, and you want to really sit down and get into the weeds, I am more than happy to do that. We can nerd out over transit all you want. So with that, I am the executive director of Monroe County Transit. It's new, it's came around about a year or so ago with the charge of looking at what a, what it's going to take to build a transit system that works for the entire Keys. So yes, we are, I am part of the county, but it is, we're all one big happy family here, especially when it comes to transit. Making sure I do this. So the question I get, as I start any of these, is like, you know, why are we here? Why are we doing this? And about four years or so ago, somebody else in this room went into the community and did probably over a thousand people, interviews, what's important to you? You know, what, what will help us the most here in the Keys? And the community said at that time, affordable housing. And transit and transportation was number three. We updated that just a year or so ago, and it flip-flopped. Transit and transportation had risen to the number one concern, affordable housing quickly thereafter. So that is why I'm here. I'm here because the people said, we want someone to pay attention to this. So we've gone through about a year's worth of process, trying to understand where we are. So today, a little more than a year So today, a little more than a year later, we get a really good idea of what's happening now. Um, and we did it, shockingly enough, the exact same way we would, we did it, that brought me here. We went back into the community, a little more specific this time, asking those people that use the system, as well as those people that benefit from that, a lot of employers, um, and tried to understand what was happening today and how the system works today. And we know that there's a lot of room for improvement. It's, we are somewhat disconnected. We have multiple, um, services working, um, in and up and down the Keys. Um, the first and foremost thing of everything we do, we have some real safety concerns as we dig into this, um, that need to be addressed, and it takes time, but we'll get there. Uh, and we need to understand how all of these things work together. I'm not going to go through each tab, but we really need to understand how these systems work. Today, they don't really connect really well. So we have some people that wait two, three hours for a bus, which is completely, that's called Greyhound. That's not a transit system. Anything more than an hour is not transit, and in reality, it should really be about 30-minute increments. So, the good news is this, this has been done everywhere. At some point in time, every entity that has ever looked at transit has been right where we are right now. And so, um, that's a great song. Um, and so, um, we're, we're in a really good place. We're right where we need to be for the, where we are in the world and where we are as a community. This, this, we're evolving like any other entity would. So, I'm not going to go too much into the data and analysis for you guys. I don't think everybody in the room really wants to hear all of the, the numbers. Um, we brought in a company called WSP, 80,000 people worldwide. Um, the number one transit person in their entire organization said, "Sign me up. I'm all about helping the Keys." Um, he's in Ohio, and, um, he's brilliant. And so he's helped us a lot understand how all of these things work together, how we reach out into the community, what they're telling us, um, who's riding today. I will tell you this, and this is no shocker, um, we don't have a single-choice rider today. Anybody riding this system now has no other option. I will also say that they are moving a lot of people right now, a lot. So, from Florida City to Marathon, they're, they're moving about 30,000 people a month. That's a lot. It's a lot of riders. Um, and when you add in the Key West ridership, they're way north of 400,000 riders every single year that they're taking off of our streets already. What we've learned is, we've got about 50% more need than we already have, which means we can double that number if we build the right system. So, um, it will really work for everyone if we can do that. It will really help us, because right now, the, the upper Keys, Isle Marata, Key Largo, even, um, you guys get hit hard when people are flooding into the Keys. Um, and so our job is to try to figure out ways to get people through a lot easier. So this is just an idea of what Key West has done. You guys have done some micro-transit up here. Um, Key West continues to experiment a little on new stuff. This is their Workforce Express. It's a fixed route service. They also have an on-demand service. They do, they use a company called Via, and they use Via's platform, but they're using their vehicles. So, like I said, this is existing, um, very, it's disconnected. We force people off a marathon. It really, we need to be able to have something that flows for everybody and doesn't force you off. And this is where we're headed. So what we really need is, when I say integrated mobility, and you see that up there, right now, you need four apps, four, to get from Florida City to Key West. That's just, that shouldn't happen. And it's not anybody's fault. Everybody's building their own systems. They're doing the best they can. You guys have already started in the micro-transit, um, service world. Uh, I would tell you that by all measures, um, it's a success, and I'll get into that briefly. I talked to Freebie and Via, there's another entity called Circuit. I talk to them probably monthly, although in the next few days, I'll be in a blackout period. We have not, we have an RFP hitting the street, so, um, that'll probably stop for a few months. Um, and then we need a really, really robust fixed route service. So, again, I'm, I'm moving as fast as I can. I know you guys have a big agenda, and I want to talk a little bit more about what, what's happening here and Freebie, um, and so you guys understand where we're, what we're looking at, and then what, what's existing for you guys today. So, um, there's ridership there. This is our idea of micro-transit. Um, it's based solely on demographics and density and where people are and where people want to go. You guys are already doing it. They're already doing it in Key West. Over time, that grows. Um, I applaud what you've done. There's a, there was an enormous vacuum. Nobody was providing service inside their own communities. It was just the bus service. Uh, so I applaud your efforts. Uh, it's, you know, nothing's ever perfect the first time out, but I would tell you, from my perspective as a transit person, it's pretty darn successful, given, given what you've done in such a short amount of time in reality. So, um, nothing is easy, but I will tell you, the FTA and FDOT are two of the most fabulous partners you could ever have. District Six, our FDOT office, and Region Two in Atlanta, the FTA, they go out of their way to try to help us. They try to help us every way they can. Um, from a capital dollar perspective, they're going to be extremely beneficial going forward. There's always operational challenges, um, but I feel really good about where we are with our major partners, both at the state and federal level. So, you know, where do we do? Where do we go? This year is going to be more about building an organization, flow chart, yes and no, what decisions do we make first? What's going to make the biggest impact? We are already going to do a micro-transit service in Stock Island. Um, we're going to do, it's a workforce moving, people back and forth for the most part. And, uh, we're do, we've done some branding. This is our brand. Um, People Smarter Than Me came up with that. Uh, and we've got an enormous media push, not our dollars. This is FDOT paying an, an entity to do it. So, um, I am charged, uh, with a budget that is of zero, and so I do everything in my power to use other people's money. We do a really good job at using other people's money. And, uh, this will give you an idea of our smaller vehicles. This is our micro-transit look. I really try to push as much as I can, and then micro-transit side electric, it's not going to work for us on the buses. FEMA won't even let us do it. So first question everybody asks, can you do electric? I can do electric and the smaller vehicles. We cannot do it on overseas highway. I need to be able to get people out with traditional fuel and an, and an evacuation. FEMA will just veto anything other than that, and I can't fault them. It's safety first. If there are 10 things we do, nine of them are safety. So, speaking of safety, we've applied for a grant. This is a, literally, we're building a digital twin of all of the Keys, every road, um, when it floods, when we get king tides, whatever that may be, we can run simulations. Um, elected officials, the community can go on, they can see from a transit perspective, USOD, USDOT is doing it. It helps me know where the roads, what roads I can drive on, um, you know, and it ties to the quote-unquote internet of things from a, from a stoplight to the sheriff's app, to even a smart trash can that tells you when it's full, so we can empty it instead of stopping at every single place. You know what you're full. So, uh, in closing, I would tell you that we are in a really good place. It's been a whirlwind tour, year one. Um, I've met many people. Um, I've got a full-blown 3D simulation of this, but this is the quickest way to do it. Um, this is a marathon. Um, that, that already exists. The Tiki Hut already exists there. It gives you an idea of an activation. This is a, I call it a mini hub, if you want to call it that. But the reason, um, we try to activate it like this is because a lot of people, so you build shelters, you're building shelters for people that we really don't want to hang out in the shelters, and in reality, all you have to do is activate it. You just have to have people there. Um, so this just gives you a really nice visual. Most people have a very difficult time trying to tie in what we're trying to achieve. Um, this will not, there might be three of these throughout the Keys. Most of them will be your traditional, um, bus stops. But I, this is a way to tie all of that service in together, and there's Holly riding her. Um, so there you have, and yes, there are chickens. They made sure we had chickens on there, too. So, um, I flew through that. I like to leave it here as opposed to the end, um, so that I'm going to, we're really going to start pushing CONC. And when I get my, my CONC t-shirts in, I'll make sure everybody gets one. Um, so, Freebie, you started pre-COVID. You know, a small little year that year. Um, you did a pretty darn good job during COVID. I was shocked. You moved probably 20,000 riders during COVID, which is a lot. You, and the following two years, you're stuck in about that 35,000 per, you know, rider level. This year, you're on pace to do about 50,000 people, 50,000 riders. Um, that's a lot. In this little community, that's a lot. So, um, you've got about 25% of those are joined rider, either couples or more. So you're moving, you're one in four, you're moving multiple people, which is also a good thing. So I would say that, all things being, you've got, it was a 63, 37, so essentially 60, 40, 60% local, 40% tourist are riding. That's the other, those are the big numbers. There's a bunch more, but those are the big numbers to take away. I would tell you, in time, as time goes on, what we would like to see as a county is everybody connected to one big happy family. I would rather you not be in that business. Today, we're not there yet, but, um, we want to be, we want the transit world and transit professionals to operate and manage not each individual. Um, I looked at, I, I engaged early on with your bus stop study, tried to take a look at what was, you know, that was really an existing condition study, as you didn't get a, um, there were no actionable items, so to speak. The only actionable item I asked of anybody that I talked to from Isle Marata at that time was, just please wait. Um, we need uniformity, and right now, you've got the Wild, Wild West, where anybody can just build one and make it as fancy as they want. That's not what we want. We want someone to see a bus stop or see a bus sign and know exactly what it is. We want FDOT, and we want the elected officials to say, "We want that stop there." Those are incredibly important things. So, um, that being said, year two will be operational. We will be running some micro-transit service, just like you guys here in Stock Island, probably first quarter of next year. January, February will start. Um, we hope to be as successful. And, um, then I would expect my goal, as I put my three-year plan together, is to have service running, um, some level of service running by the end of year three, to just put, which in my opinion is lightning fast, you know, um, especially from the government world. So with that, I'll answer any questions you want. I don't want to keep you.
Anybody have any questions for Richard? Go ahead, Henry.
Thank you for being with us this evening. How would your plans impact the local rideshare program that we now have in place?
Um, well, I think from an, I don't know that it would impact it per se. I think, uh, because you've already crossed the threshold, and you've got success, and you have people's riding habits have started to change, where they're willing to get in to what they consider public transit. Um, the biggest changes, I would say, is I don't give anything away for free. Um, the charge is going to be, it's $2. That's what it costs to ride a bus, costs to ride an on-demand service in, in the lower Keys. That would probably be the biggest change, um, but nominal. Uh, and the other big change would be, uh, the service would operate in Isle Marata, but the service would be a CONC service, not an Isle Marata service.
My next question is in reference to the funding. Is this public funds that you're going to be using, or is it unincorporated area, or is it the whole county?
So, um, that's a, okay. We are currently, the, we have an FDOT grant, just like you do, for 50% of our cost, and the county's putting up the other 50% of our cost. You are, you have the exact same model up here for your service. So, um, that's called a service development grant from FDOT. We need to find ways in the long haul to pick up that, that cost operationally. In the short term, in the next three to six years, I can probably work with FDOT to keep that structure and grow that. But, um, in the long run, we're going to need, I say we, the county and the cities throughout the Keys, we're going to need to look at, okay, how do we fund this fairly, um, and what skin in the game does everybody have? I'm not going to ask you for any more money, um, at least today or anytime soon at all. But as we grow, we need to have a far more substantive, serious discussion about what it looks like. We aren't there with, financially yet, to be able to break down, like, what the costs are going to be, I, exactly. But I would tell you, you're getting a great bang for your buck right now.
Well, I was, I've been working on the bus stops for some time. Are you suggesting that I no longer should be doing that, or you've given me some direction?
I, if that's the case, I would suggest I drive back up here and you and I sit down and talk about it, and figure out exactly what it is you want to achieve. This is your city. Um, what I want to do is make sure it's safe and uniform. Uh, that's my, those are the two goals I have. If that can't happen, then we just need to find a better, we need to make sure they're in the right place. Um, because you, you've got exactly, here's what they look like, here's where they're located. I didn't see anywhere in there where it said, "Well, you know, bus stop number two only has one person, and they can walk 200 yards away where there's 20." Um, and in reality, in the upper Keys, 90% of the service is run by a, it's, it's hail. It's a incredibly dangerous. Somebody sticks their hand up and the bus just stops. And worse, when it gets dark out like it is now, they just turn the light on, on their phone, even more dangerous. So, um, the way we fix that is by physically riding the buses, putting people on, finding out where people are aggregating, and saying, "That's the logical place for a stop." Or if it's not safe and FDOT says no, or the elected official said, "No way we can put that there. We have to move it." Those are all the things we have to take into account. Not, "We want it here at a convenience," but that's absolutely the right place for a stop.
You see, I've been working on this, not full-time, quite frankly, but in, in year 22, we passed that we hope to complete what we want to do as far as bus stops last month, last month. That's where we are. So, what you're saying to me is, I should continue, there are 12 designated spots for bus stops.
That's right.
Are you suggesting that we move forward? Don't care too much about what you're doing, but at least get bus stops in Isle Marata completed?
That's a call you have to make.
Well, I'm going to make it now, because I'm going to continue to doing it.
That's not my call.
Okay.
That's, it's your city. Um, yeah, I would tell you that you need, like, you have 12 designated stops. I would tell you, I have no idea if those are the right stops.
Okay.
And, and you might, you might have the data. I never saw that in the report.
I'm not suggesting I'm ready.
No, I'm just, I-
I'm suggesting I'm very happy to meet with you.
Sure.
I want to move forward.
Okay.
Because mainly, the bus stops are for our workforce, really.
100%.
No question about it.
Right.
So, that's my objective, to satisfy those people who are standing out in the rain and sunshine, et cetera, et cetera.
Could not agree more.
Okay. I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I, the question I have is that, just that EPTO has to okay and approve these anyways, right? Because they're going in the right of way.
If they're going in the right of way, absolutely, they have to approve. And I would tell you, even if they're not, I would reach out to FDOT because of all the work they do on overseas. We really would like to see, like to be able to pull off a little bit. Both it helps flow of traffic, and it's safer for the people getting on and off the bus.
Uh, I'd just like to follow up a little bit with what Henry said. Uh, I'm very interested in seeing those bus stops get built, because they, we have a lot of workforce, um, workers, um, and they're exposed to the weather. They're exposed to, to noise and wind and fumes of the traffic. Often, it's at night, as you know, they were- Often, it's at night, as you know, they wave their cell phones. A lot of them are women that are not guarded and it's unsafe. So whatever you could do to coordinate with us or Henry to accelerate that, I would be a big fan of that. Secondly, I just wish, wanted to ask if you could just maybe give us a little more detail of what you know about the relationship between what you're doing and supporting affordable housing or workforce housing and tourism. So in other words, as you go forth to develop the system, are you going to be sort of maybe targeting workforce centers where employers are? Or where downtown Key West, for example, where there's more tourism? I guess there's more, I don't know really. But are you kind of looking at it? Because I thought I understood you to say the two major groups that you're, you see riding are tourists and workforce, but more workforce.
Here in Almarada with Freebie, that's what, it's 60, 40. The system, the current public, the transit system as it exists today is 99-plus percent, "I have no other way to get here and get to work." It is not tourism, and it is not people that live here. It's people that need to get to work and there is no other way.
It sounds like you're confirming what I've been saying, is there's a lot of people here that really need it and use it. We're not just millionaires driving around in Teslas, right?
No, they, they, they have to have this service to, to put food on the table. And your thinking is correct. We need to build shelters to get them out of the rain and the heat. All of those things are correct. And, you know, we just, what we're doing now, as we build a system, is, okay, what is that next logical step? The next logical step is infrastructure. There's no point in me grabbing, I need 22 buses to do what we're doing today with seven for the whole system. I need 22. There's no point in getting one more bus if I don't have the infrastructure to support it, meaning bus stops, maintenance, all of those things. So we're right where we're supposed to be. You're ahead of the game here in Almarada. You really are. So, you know, we, I'll do anything I can to help and support you and whatever that may be.
We're glad you're here and we're very happy about what you're trying to get done. We want to help.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I appreciate what you're doing, because that's sort of what I've been doing. I've been looking into different options for ride share. And it should not fall on our taxpayers. There are grants out there. And I think the, we need to connect all the Keys, so it is a constant flow with the buses. And the ride share has to be able to sustain itself over time. It just can't keep coming from the taxpayers. I think, Henry, with these bus stops, we should wait and find out what the design is gonna be for all the Keys and match theirs. I don't think we should, like you said, have different things where you don't know it's a bus stop. It should be uniformed. I like the consistency that you're gonna bring, and it's something that is greatly needed here. And we have to figure out a way where it's not on the backs of the, the people who pay taxes here. So I greatly appreciate you. And I've been wanting to meet you. It was actually Ed who said he was gonna invite you here, because I've been looking into it, so thank you.
Ed Valen told me.
I know, thank you.
Richard, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, so now we're moving on to public comment.
Okay, we have, first up, Van Cadenhead, followed by Brandon Davis, George Scott, Sue Miller, Angel Borden, Deb Gillis, and Joe Wishmeyer. So first up is Van.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Van Cadenhead, Almarada. I don't want to seem redundant, but it seems we keep having the same problems for the same reasons. Additions and deletions, we had a good discussion about that and the time. You know, we, we had seven additions after everybody had been looking at one set of, of agenda items on the internet and suddenly we have seven more. So it's, it's very confusing to the public. And since, and since we've decided to split into two meetings, it's even more untenable that, that we create more confusion for the people. Now, the consent agenda should allow some public comment, and I hope that you'll allow some of it. And if we have six items on the consent agenda, I think public comment needs to be a little more than three minutes for all six items. Now, on, on the mayor council communications tonight, we have number seven. We have seven Bravo is a discussion regarding council compensation referendum. Now, we solved this a meeting ago with a 3-2 vote to not have a discussion about this. It was, it was, to have it on the ballot had to be a 4-1 vote, and we did not have that. So we solved it. But it's coming back again, because you didn't get the right answer. You didn't get the answer you wanted. And that's what, we've done that on so many items. The people don't get the answer they want if they just couch the, the proposition a little bit differently and put it back on the agenda at a later date. I don't think that's really fair to the people. If it's solved, let it be solved. We got the, a discussion regarding tea table is on here. Now, that's, that's a hot button item. That's gonna be discussed, I hope, in great detail when it comes to mayor council communications. And I hope that you let some of the, the public have a piece of that, too. Because it, it involves the public, it involves a historic site. It's very important economically, it's very important precedent-wise, as far as V zones and A zones and, and zoning of, of property. And, and for it to go on the way it's gone on without your supervision, without any knowledge in the public of what's going on there, to get to this point, I think it's, it's totally wrong. It's not democracy, it's autocracy. It's being, it's being done behind the scenes surreptitiously. And we don't need some of that. We've had quite enough of that. Okay, I, I, I think you get the general idea. And, and I don't want to, I don't like to be redundant. But if you would fix it, I wouldn't have to be. Thank you.
Brandon Davis.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. My name's Brandon Davis. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm a resident here in Almarada. And I'm a property owner of 186 South Airport Road, located in the Tavernero Airport. On September 21st, I appealed the village biologist's decision regarding the habitat on a piece of property that I own on the Tavernero Airport. Unfortunately, that appeal was denied by the council that evening. The village biologist said his determination was based upon the code and the required Almarada Habitat Evaluation Index Handbook, also known as the HEI. As you all know, this is the controlling document for habitat evaluation within the village. And it was created by a gentleman named Phil Frank. I think everyone here is familiar with Phil Frank, but he's the most regarded, respected, and experienced biologist in the entire county. He got a PhD from the University of Florida in 1996 in ecology. He graduated from UF. He's been down here for the majority of his career. The village biologist in that meeting at minute 52, if you'd like to look it up, he states that he spent over 100 hours of time in the field with Phil Frank and that he highly respected him. And again, Phil Frank wrote the HEI. He wrote it for the village, and he also wrote the code for the village when it comes to habitat analysis. The village biologist that evening went on to say further about Phil Frank. He said, "I learned," and I quote, "I learned from someone a lot more educated and experienced than me." Based upon this information, I was like, "Well, I'll contact Phil Frank." Whoever this individual is, Phil Frank, he's, he's the god of the hammock. And he is, he's the most experienced. So I contacted him and reached out to him and said, "Will you provide me a determination, your determination of this property?" He agreed to do that. I provided all of you, I'm sorry, Ms. Jolene, I didn't get to see you right before the meeting, but I do have it. It's a signed and notarized affidavit from Phil Frank stating that the property is disturbed. So I now have a total of three biologists who are in agreement that it is disturbed with hammock or outright disturbed, as Phil Frank determines it to be. Those three biologists are, conflicts with what the village biologist is stating. So just to be clear, Phil Frank, you have it in front of you this evening? He states that it is disturbed. Based upon all of this, I'm asking you to please reconsider my case. And if you have any questions regarding your right to reconsider this, I provided you with the documentation from case law in the state of Florida that states the council has the right to rehear any decision that they have. I provided you all that as well. This was also acknowledged by John Quick on October 17th via email as well, that this right is correct. And that case summary concludes again, town council has the inherent power to reconsider its previous vote. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, can I address a couple of those items? That was a quasi-judicial item. That quasi-judicial record is closed. It's really not appropriate to try to be supplementing the quasi-judicial record at this time. That record is closed. It has been considered and dealt with by the council. So I just want to make sure that there's no waiver of, or implication that the village is accepting evidence after the close of a quasi-judicial item. With regard to the statement that I agree that the council has the inherent right to reconsider, of course, the council has inherent right to reconsider. Your procedures, however, are more limited. The council, there is a difference between an inherent right to do something and a local rule and restriction that you place upon yourself, which you are entitled to do. Your local rules state that a motion for reconsideration must be made at the same meeting that the item is considered. So since there was a statement made with my name on it, I, I just wanted to make sure there was a clarification at the contemporaneous with the statement that was made related to that. Thank you.
Marnie, who's next, please?
George Scott.
My name is George Scott. I live at 420 South Coconut Palm Taverner. That's in Plantation Key Colony. When you come down South Coconut Palm, we make a 90-degree turn that then goes by the bay. The property on both sides of the road is all filled up with trees. You cannot see to make the curb. The person on the right has boulders right by the side of the highway. That's not his, it's Almarada's property. It is your responsibility to have this cleaned up. You cannot see, it's a blind curb. If two big trucks are coming, they, one's gotta stop and let the other one go at such a tight turn. Please, address this and look at it. When you see, you cannot see to make the turn if there's a car coming or a truck coming or anybody's coming. Also, that part of South Coconut Palm, we had two sewers put in there from way back when. They dug across the street, dug across the street. They just put down asphalt, but they got the big dips. Every other road that I've been in in Almarada is nice and smooth. Ours boom, 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 when you go down. I'd like for you to address that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, Lower Matocumbe. I want to talk about public participation. I think that we should make every effort to energize the people of our community to get them more involved in, in the important decisions that you make. I think it's a real shame that so many of the important issues that you discuss, meeting after meeting, are without public comment. And that's true in the, in the agenda today, where you have a lot of things that are really of great concern to our community that are listed under council communication or attorney communication with no public comment. And, and I think that, that that is really sad, that we have items that I think would be better addressed in a workshop. And instead, you sit here and by the time we get to items in the agenda where the public is included, the public is gone. I want to congratulate Henry on the effort with the bags. I think it was great that you got a corporation like Publix to participate in our effort to eliminate plastic. The other issue that was brought up tonight about adding items to the agenda within 24 hours is a real frustration to me, because I always look at the agenda as soon as it comes out. And it's just shocking to me when I get to a meeting and find out that five things have been added and that I'm unaware of. And, and I, I think that while I like the idea of extending it to 48 hours, I agree with the manager that that's kind of tough, because now with Tuesday meetings, it's more difficult. And so I would suggest that when an item is added, if you want to leave it at 24 hours, but put them at the very end of the agenda, so they're more likely to be heard on Thursday, so that we will, or force them to a Thursday, and so that that won't happen. I do like the idea of an action list. I used to always watch the action list. If I didn't get it from, from someone, I would make a public record request. And eventually, Maria put it on the website, which I always appreciated, that it was actually on the website, so that the public could see the action list, which was wonderful, because it gave all of the things that you directed the staff to do and what the status was. And, and it, it was a document that was not only worthwhile to you, but to, to the public. And it, and it really helped us keep track, so that the staff, the council, and the public always knew what the status of every project was. I think it was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Who's next? Marnie?
Angel Borden.
Angel Borden, Almarada. Good evening, everybody. And I'm really happy to see Mr. Koconos here, because finally, we have somebody, even temporarily, that at least knows our history and what's been in this area and what's been going on for decades. These are some questions for you, and they do need to be answered. Is it allowable for any village employee to choose to ignore any fire code violations that are deficient under the state regulations? What happens when false and misleading statements are made in writing by village employees regarding our actual laws, guidelines, and even village records? Who does that go to? Do you prefer this bias, discrimination, to be aired in the media? Or how would you like it to go? I am willing to share the documents and the proof with our current acting manager, along with Mr. Quick, in the hope to avoid a future shade meeting. I am not going away, and I am not going to allow people to continue to discriminate and state falsehoods in writing. Your agenda discussion of add-ons is so unfair to us, the people, because we don't get a chance to check it as often. We don't get to see it. So as much leeway as possible, but I would really like to know the definition of what is an emergency. To me, an emergency is a flood, a broken water line, a hurricane, a fire, something definitely life-threatening. What is an emergency to one person may not be a real emergency to everybody else. So I would really hope we would take that. When I grew up, agendas always had old and unfinished business. And it allowed everybody to track what was going on. For several years, I have asked for that, and every council has ignored it. Every one of you said, "We're going to be more transparent." Well, since this council has started, our public comment has been stripped from the actual written minutes. Since before this council with some of the other village managers, now I understand why the action list disappeared from the website. This is all unacceptable, and this all looks like hidden. I am not going away, contrary to the Coconut Telegraph. My business, Old Conk, Inc., the Dockside Raw Bar, remains open. My attorneys that are fighting for my other interests at Old Conk Harbor have already been successful in removing a local judge who admitted their bias already in the courts. I'm not afraid of lawsuits. I have a daughter that's an attorney. But these questions of mine need to be answered, and they need to be answered quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Who's next? Marnie? Anybody else?
Next up is Deb Gillis.
Deb Gillis, Almarada. I see the Publix people left. At least, it looks like they did. I actually wanted to give them a compliment also. It is in relationship to the bags. There was an article that just came out just a few days ago, and I think I forwarded it to all of you. all of you. Publix, with their bags and their recycling type program, reusing bags, has planted 100,000 trees over the last few years. Not all in Florida, but they have planted trees. And I think it commends them to what they've been trying to do and good things for the society. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody else? Marnie?
Yes. Joe Wishmeyer, who is on Zoom. Okay, Mr. Wishmeyer, go ahead.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Bear with me because I did write this before your discussion earlier. Mr. Mayor and Council, again, we had major issues under mayor, council, and attorney manager communications for consideration without any public input. Under mayor, council, we even have new manager job description and pay by Vice Sirota. Have we not had a job description in the past? D, discussion on turning a historic island, a former Navy base, into a modern-day resort on a flood-prone island. E, strategic plan. How about a public survey to see what is important to the residents as well? Under attorney manager, we're going to introduce Kimberly Matthews as our next interim manager starting January 8, with Maria Bassett filling in from December 7 to January 7. Ms. Matthews will be our fourth interim manager in six months. Why do we let the county that we incorporated from dictate our staff? I guess we have no better luck accepting interim managers than we do hiring our own. C, update on East Ridge Road boat ramp closure. On September 7, Mr. Gregg brought that up with the ramp with no parking, no benches at the end of a dead-end street is a nuisance because noise every now and then. Council listened and turned him down. In my public comment on September 28, I reminded him that three weeks earlier, council heard his complaint and declined to take action. Now it's coming up again for the third time. I also reminded him that he voted to put a bar distillery with outdoor amplified music in a residential neighborhood next to a 24-hour 7-Eleven complex. Do you know how many times this brand-new council heard that item? Once. Discussing the noise ordinance is a good idea, but not for a public boat ramp, but for us poor residents that have to deal with real noise and parking issue. Regarding the 2023 traffic survey, Alamoata is the worst in the county. Winley Key and Plantation Key are among the biggest offenders. In that area, you also voted for a distillery, Sun Outdoors, SD Marine, which is the ex Smugglers Cove, and the 24-hour 7-Eleven with two schools and churches in the area. Consider our current water and traffic problems and stop adding to the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
Nope.
That it? Okay. With that being said, public comment is now closed. We're going to move on to citizens advisory and committee reports and appointments. Diane, I think you're next. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I'd like to know if I could have that for Halloween next year. That thing is awesome. I am Diane Harbaugh. I'm the chairperson for the Alamoata Nearshore Water Citizens Advisory Committee, and we met on October 24, of which I was unfortunately unable to attend. But I have our minutes here, just notes of what we talked about. And Elizabeth, I think they made your packet this time. So I think they're in there. Yeah, we're working on that. The committee heard updates from the sheriff's department on derelict vessels and the new process for tagging and processing these vessels. And the sheriff seems to be good with everything and the way that it's working. And you've probably noticed, some of those vessels have disappeared. So we really appreciate that. The committee received a staff update that all permits have been acquired and contractors procured to install new buoys at the White Marlin Beach Vessel Exclusion Zone. The installation of the new buoys should be completed within the next few weeks. The committee continues to support staff and homeowners and will support the forthcoming amendment to the ordinance outlining the changes to the zoning of the vessel exclusion zone when it is brought before the council for consideration in the near future. There are no major updates from the Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary, but by God, they're going to get that planned on one day. However, the committee did review the recommendations from the Sanctuary Advisory Council's new buoy working group for putting out mooring buoys for anchoring. The committee also continues to have significant concerns regarding boater safety in Tavernier Creek, from where the no-way ends at the houses all the way to the bayside, and respectfully requests the council direct staff to coordinate with the appropriate agency, staff of the county, the state, and federal levels to provide recommendations for the establishment of a new idle speed zone in that area of Tavernier Creek. And because we talked about the sanctuary there, I did want to remind the council that you do have a seat on the Sanctuary Advisory Committee that can be, you know, the mayor can pick someone to go to those meetings. The committee continues to seek feedback about the efficiency of the recently installed Whale Harbor Channel Idle Speed Zone signage before requesting any additional signage from the council, because there is some signage up now, and we're going to see how that works before we go any further. We did, the committee did discuss the proposed guide boat ramp at Founder's Park and other management alternatives. The committee continues to support guide access to the existing boat ramp at Founder's Park as the most cost-efficient and environmentally responsible option to protect working waterfront for the guide community of Alamoata. While there are no recent updates on this discussion for the council since the last committee meeting, the committee will engage when appropriate as the charge is led by local guides to continue the discussion of the use of the Founder's Park boat ramp. The committee also wants you to, everyone out there, all of you, and all of you everywhere, to know that we do have some openings. So we encourage members of the public interested in the issues facing our nearshore waters of Alamoata to apply and join this committee. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Thanks for the effort, Diane. And you had made a request in your report, which I'm referring to so happily, about directing, asking for the council to direct staff to deal with idle speed zone at Tavernier Creek.
Yes.
So what is, how would we like to handle that? That's a request that I think we should acknowledge one way or another. And this speaks to the fact that we ask our committees to do work and make recommendations, and so when they do, we should respond in some way.
John, can you help? How can we put that on a future agenda for discussion? I mean, to what Elizabeth was talking about, that we can discuss this?
Yeah, I mean, I can add it to the December agenda if you guys would like. Same thing as I did. Anyways, I can do it right now.
All right. Okay. All right. There you go, Elizabeth.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Diane, thank you so much for your time. Okay.
Use your Publix bags.
Yeah. Mr. Paige Presnell, is he here? Okay. For workforce? Okay. Thank you.
The opposite way. Good evening. Yes, my name is Paige Presnell Alamoata. The discussion earlier regarding workforce transit kind of segues nicely into this. So the committee, we met on October 16. This is our first meeting with our new members. Everyone introduced themselves and provided a little background. The committee elected a new chair and vice chair, myself. I was elected the chair, and Don Horton was elected vice chair. There was a discussion of creating a work plan that's going to assist us in the affordable housing compliance. This is going to be an ongoing task that staff could help us with. The current compliance plans are not being enforced or verified, and with the addition of 300 additional units, this is going to be imperative. There was a discussion about putting teeth into the code to help us enforce these items. The committee also discussed the difficulty in enforcing affordability with homesteaded properties. There was also discussion regarding Live Local Act and its effect on the village and affordable housing. Rebecca Jedin presented the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, which distributes those 300 units over 10 years with the ability to borrow forward. The committee talked about the benefits and drawbacks of borrowing forward. The committee liked the idea of borrowing forward, but doing it with the backend. Finally, staff discussed the inventory the village owned and the properties that are suitable for affordable housing under Live Local Act. There was also a brief discussion regarding holding a joint meeting with LPA in the future. I was told to keep it short, so I did. Is there any questions?
Is there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for coming. All right. Thank you for being chair, too. Okay, so let's see where we are going. Okay, so now we are on to mayor council communication. And I believe, Henry, you are the first one. Hey.
Okay. I was approached by Brandon Davis in reference to the airport road. And when we heard his application, he was denied his request. And he asked me to bring it to the council for one more time. I know it's against the rules. And the only way he has an opportunity to bring it back is with your approval. I have to declare that when it came up for the vote, I voted in opposition to Mr. Davis. My vote has nothing to do with his request. Nothing. If you want to allow him to bring it back, another bite of the apple, so to speak, it's your decision, not my personal decision. All I'm doing is applying with his request because he seems to have additional information which he would benefit by. Personally, I don't have any problem with that. So the problem is with you. If you want to waive the rules and allow Mr. Davis to come back one more time, it is your decision. I made no promises to Mr. Davis. He understands that if you vote for or against him, that is it. There's nothing left for him to talk about. So having said that, I'll leave it with the mayor. And what is your pleasure?
Elizabeth, would you like to comment?
I'll go last.
Pardon?
I'll wait. I'll wait on this.
All right.
I'll go. I have a suggestion, and I think it's a fair suggestion about this. And I think it's really what we should be looking at. We need to, and I wrote this down so I'd get it correct, we need to adopt the updated development code that the county has for the definition of different habitats in this community. We don't have everything that the county has. And if we adopted what they have, which we should, it would be more consistent. We are in Monroe County, whether we're a village or not, and it would stop our staff from having to classify only a few divisions we have and open it up for an easier way for these people, and not just him, but other people, to come and it be looked at like it is disturbed. I've seen the property. But we don't recognize all the definitions that Monroe County does. So I'd like to ask our staff if they would look into us adopting and looking at adding to our definition of habitat in the village. So I don't know. And I talked to John about that.
I'd like to ask Ed about it because Ed knows about it because he's a planner for many years. So Mr. Kekonas, could you please comment on what the vice mayor just said and about this disturbed or disturbed with hammock? And can I clarify one other thing? The habitat in the county is no different than the habitat in the village, correct? I mean, we don't...
The habitat.
We have special trees.
Okay.
And the codes are slightly different. I did listen to part of that meeting because I wasn't here yet. So I'm not an expert on exactly all the testimony that occurred, but I think what I'm hearing her say is you'd want it, you would be interested in at least entertaining the idea of, at least for the Upper Keys, that the environmental habitat clearing allowances, all those types of things are identical. That's what I'm thinking I'm hearing.
You said it so much better than me, though.
Not really.
Yes.
So staff could, I mean, I don't want to speak for Jennifer, and I know that Daniel's out of town, but I mean, I think if that's what the consensus of the council is to look into that.
I don't know.
I'm sure they can. I just don't know how long it will take. I'm not sure the exact date that Daniel's back, but they could certainly take a look, contrast and compare. I could also work to make sure that if there's any questions, that they would have a counterpart at the county to make sure that if there's anything that's not super clear, that they get, you know, experts on both sides of staff to get it as clear as they can to come back to you.
I think it makes sense. And it's not just this one case. There are going to be a lot of other people who are going to come up against the same thing. And if we can at least align how our definitions are and what we recognize, to me, it just makes sense.
And this is for habitat?
Yes.
Wetlands, too? I just want to make sure. I mean, I don't want to kind of, I want to make sure that...
I mean, they go hand in hand, don't they?
Yeah.
She's shaking. Go ahead. I see Elizabeth freaking out over here, so go ahead.
So I think that that request requires a further conversation. It strikes me that to find pockets of problems and deal with them individually is not a smart way to plan. Ed and Jennifer and I had a very heated conversation about my understanding of this request that we have been making for the last probably seven months about updating our comprehensive plan and our LDRs. And that speaks to your question, Sharon. And that is a more comprehensive way of dealing with these problems that come up every time we have to make a hard decision for lovely people who are challenged by our outdated comprehensive plan. And so if we can't give direction that our planning department, no matter who is in our planning department, can understand and hear, we will always be faced with unhappy individuals who can't get what they want because we don't have an updated comprehensive plan. And what that means is that we then are forced to make exceptions over and over and over. So when we don't make an exception for this man, but we are going to make an exception for the next guy who comes down the way, then that puts us in a very, whoever us is sitting here, in a very uncomfortable position every single time. And it is beyond me. It's just beyond my understanding that to try to figure out what is wrong with making, giving very clear direction that our planning department can understand to update on a comprehensive manner our comprehensive plan and our LDRs. I don't understand that. And Ed, I can't imagine that in, at the county, you find individual cases that you work on in order to, that, you know, little pockets of problems that you work on, one little pocket at a time. It just not, it just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not smart planning.
What you want to do, what you want to do, we all agree on, that we have outdated codes. We have outdated codes.
That we need to update our codes.
Yeah, but you, why can't we take the pie and take it in pieces right now until we get what we want? Because you're updating of the plan. I don't see that happening anytime soon, just from the way it's gone. And I know, I know this is a thing you really want, but to me, this is a problem that has come up in front of us. There is a solution. He's sitting right there. We can't, so we're not going to do it all at once, which I know is a perfect way to do it. I think it's responsible of us to at least start picking away at some of the things when they come up. And I know what you want, and I agree with you, but to me, this thing's right in front of us.
Thank you for agreeing with me. I think we actually, please speak up if I'm incorrect. I think we have all agreed to task our planning department to look at updating our comprehensive plan. And yet, our department has not heard that message, so nothing is happening.
Well, in their defense... Well, in their defense, in their defense, they're shorthanded. We have had a lot of ups and downs and ins and outs and people coming and going. So to me, if we can start chipping away at some of the issues that we all know are a problem, then to me, okay, we're walking slower to the finish line, but we're still walking at this point. And I just think, I know what you want to do, and I agree with you, but to me, when we have something that's in front of us, and we have a solution that we can, is going to be agreeable to everybody, I think it's only smart of us to at least take baby steps until we can take that big step when we get the new manager and more people for Jennifer to work with. So, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So, just to kind of get us back on the pavement again, the conversation, Henry's discussion, was about whether or not we should, and this is a procedural issue, a legal procedural issue in a quasi judicial setting, should we reopen this by waiving the rules? And I think that when this new council was sworn in, things were loose and fast. We've tightened that up now. We have our rules. Why have them if we're not going to follow them? So there could be some exceptions in emergencies and things, but I think it's more important to play by the rules than it is to bend them, even though, you know, he's a compelling young man. He's about the nicest guy I've ever met in this political setting. He's done his homework. He's, he's, in all respects, very deserving of what he's asking for. But I don't think bending the rules justifies...
What are you saying?
Well, well, okay, let me finish, please. So to just kind of stay, you know, we're supposed to stay on topic. We're out in the weeds, no pun intended, but I want to go in the weeds, too. So, you know, the thing about a hammock and our environmental protections, you know, we incorporated in part because we wanted to control that ourselves. And I will disagree respectfully with the vice mayor that changing our code to be more in line with the county is a good idea. I don't think that it is for the simple reason that we define ourself by our rules and how we enforce them. And one of the reasons that we incorporated is that we wanted to be different from the county. And if you come south from Marathon or north from Key Largo and you cross our bridge, you know right away that we care a lot about trees and hammocks and the environment because it's very different. It shows that, you don't even have to say anything. You can see it. And so that's in part because of the way we came to be where we are today. When we incorporated in 1997, we inherited the county's plans. They had a real cumbersome, fumbly definition of what a hammock was or wasn't. And if I remember correctly, at the end of my first term on the council in 2004, we passed a moratorium on development in a hammock because we wanted to make it better. We wanted to protect it, and in a large part because the state asked us to. A lot of our development rights were keyed to our protection of the environment. So we did that. Mr. Frank, as Mr. Davis mentioned, was the lead person involved with that. And he narrowed it down and he simplified it to what we have today, which I think the county saw, and then they modified their rules to kind of catch up with us. That's why they're very similar today. But I don't think that we should, I mean, the county has been very good to bring us Ed and Brian and now Kimberly, and we work well with them. But we have the right, and I think we have the obligation, to define who we are by how we enforce our rules. And if we want to make them different about protecting a hammock, we should do that. And the citizens have spoken very loudly, to me at least, on that, to be very careful about that. I also like what Elizabeth said about, I think I tried to write it down because I can't remember anymore, about pockets of problems, fixing them one at a time. I would like to speak later on about strategic planning as a prerequisite to rewriting the code and the comp plan because we need to have some agreement about the direction that we're heading in. So I do appreciate the vice mayor's idea of trying to help someone, especially someone I personally think deserves it. But I don't think we should go about doing that by waiving rules or bending rules. And I think we should wait until we can concentrate on all of these things at one time and divide them into parts and pieces, and then have a comprehensive review. And then I think the public should weigh in on this because hammocks are controversial, you know, and we're going to wind up having to buy a lot of them, and I think that we should, if we have the funds, and deal with it that way. If it's disturbed, we should discuss about what disturbed means. Just because the county thinks it's disturbed one way may not be for us. The county has habitat from Key West to north Key Largo. There's a lot of differences. Their hammock is similar to ours, but we may want to treat ours a little bit differently. So I guess to answer the original question, should we do what Henry asked, my response would be no. Thank you.
So I'm going to say a few things now, my little two cents in. First of all, the, where this is was all cleared at one time when Cliff Miller and Gene Rotis and them did that. And it's in between two houses. It's not acres of hammock at all. I really feel bad because there, you know, how many houses are over there? This property is not hammock, all right, at all. According to what he just said, Phil Franks said it's disturbed, and it's not disturbed with hammock. It's disturbed. So I, I mean, where does a person go from here if we don't have the classification and to, for him to do that, he comes in and so he can never apply again on this property? Am I right or wrong, Ed? Or John, can you help me out?
Well, I mean, certainly if there's a change in the law or anything like that, you could certainly apply under the new standards. Yeah.
All right, and that's what the vice mayor's talking about, right?
Yep. Yep, and I don't like the fact that you insinuate that I'm bending the rules. He's not the only person this is going to affect. By incorporating a different and a broader variety of things, it will help a lot of people and not just him. So I found that a little bit offensive.
I was not intending, and I used the word respectfully. Please remember that. We're trying to get along. We're trying to have a new approach to things here, and I'm, hopefully, I can do that. I didn't mean that. I apologize if you felt offended. It was not intentional.
Mr. Mayor, can I also mention as a follow up to the prior about the change in laws? Obviously, if he has a change in his plans, too, he could reapply. I mean, that would be a different...
Okay.
You know, if he changes his project or anything like that, it would be a different project to be considered.
Okay, so would we need to bring this back at a later date or something for discuss this further since it's just...
I took Vice Mayor Mahoney's request as a request to give guidance to staff. And if there's a consensus of council to do it, it's a request to give guidance to staff to evaluate the potential to make the changes that she discussed and make a recommendation. And obviously, with that would come, if staff's recommending it, would come a proposed ordinance which would have to go to the LPA and then would come here. So it's, I mean, it's something that could be done, not, certainly couldn't, a proposed ordinance could not be before the council before December, though. I just want to make sure that the timing is correct.
All right.
I mean, I, I just, I think that what's hap, part of what's happening here is that we're feeling backed up against the wall to take action on, on someone, on an issue because we have a lovely applicant who is being inconvenienced by what's on the books right now. But but removing that, this, this individual, and again, you know, removing him, the conversation is about the balance that we're trying to strike between environmental, maintaining environmental integrity of our community and, and building. It's, it's a bigger conversation. It just is a bigger conversation. And so when we, and so this, this, when we respond to, sort of like with a knee jerk reaction to, you know, to a situation like this, I think it's short sighted. And I think that our job is to, is to really think about the fact that we're sitting in an area of state critical concern where, you know, we have a, and I mean, I feel we have an obligation to, to look at the nuance of changing our laws when it comes to hammocks and how we deal with them and, and how that affects our bigger community. It's, it's just a bigger conversation, which is inconvenient to have. It's, they're hard conversations to have.
It is because Elizabeth, right now Phil Franks saying this is not even hammock. He's saying it's disturbed.
But Gus, but Buddy, what we're saying then is that, that Daniel and our staff was, I mean, we're not, we're not here to re, to rehear this conversation. I mean, that's, that's not what we're here to do. And, and I mean, I don't know Phil Franks. You know, it's a bigger conversation, and, and we have trouble having hard conversations. We just do. This, this group does. It hasn't in the past. The fact that we're sitting here feeling backed up against the wall is, is, I mean...
But what she's talking about doing is trying to fix it. If that was the mistake she said, she's looking at it...
But that's what Mark was saying, that we made a deliberate choice to re, to go in a different path from the county.
So we're going to put everything on hold until this new strategic plan pops up.
It's not, it's, but here's the thing, that, that if we don't start that process, then we're going to continue to have not only unhappy citizens because these conversations are going to continue to hit us. I mean, it's, it's got to start sometime, and we have not said...
And we do both at the same time?
Right, but, but where are we, I mean, again, I thought we had given direction to our planning department. They don't think they've gotten that direction. There has been no movement on looking...
That I don't know.
Yeah, that is true because I've had that conversation. There is no movement on looking at updating, at updating our comprehensive plan. They haven't heard that direction from us. And at some point, we have to make those hard decisions.
So, so let's go around the table here, okay? Mark, you already said...
Well, I'm in favor of looking at the definitions and trying to do that, but in the context of everything else that we have going on, I appreciate the vice mayor's, what should I say, without being offensive. She doesn't want to be patient to, I didn't mean that that way. She doesn't want to wait and do it as part of the big plan. She wants to fix it now because she likes helping people now. That's what we all love about her. But there's a lot more to the picture than just a little slice of the pie. It fits into other things that we have to do. We only have a few building rights left. We have redevelopment to consider. We have retirement of, of development rights that we're going to have to address either financially or in court. And we should weave all that in to see where our priorities are and where they aren't. And, and maybe there's a thing we can do. I mean, you know, it's kind of, it kind of begs the question, if we don't have any more B-Pass allocations to give out, then why is somebody working so hard to get into B-Pass to get a building permit? We, I mean, you got to kind of look at that, too. He has the right to do that, but I'm just saying, it's not like it was six months ago.
He also has a right for to buy a TD off?
He could do that, too. He could, I agree with all that. But we should, we started out 23 years ago with our 23, 2020 plan. We've, we've gotten past that by three years. It's time for us to take another look and see where we want to go. We should have, you know, workshops with the public. And that's what strategic planning is all about. I'll jump ahead and maybe spoiler alert, say, you know, we're contemplating a, an interim manager who has led the county on strategic planning. So that, that's one reason I place that on the agenda because I learned about her experience and her success with that, and I hope we can take advantage of that. And it might not go as slowly as you fear. It could go really quickly. And because we are, I have it in the agenda. We have a strategic plan that's, you know, at the end, so we can, we have a running start. So if we just can have the patience to do this right instead of Band-Aids along the way, the result will be better in the long run. I think most people would agree with that.
Sharon, if I could, you, I think you have brought this kind of thing up, like, like week two of being elected, and I would just point out, I mean, we've had these conversations before, and had we, a year ago, insisted on updating our current comprehensive plan and the LDRs, I mean, we would be done by now. So again, when are we going to start this process with very clear direction? If we, I mean, if we continue to push it down the road, we'll continue to have these kinds of frustrations. So...
So, Henry, what's your feelings on this with the vice mayor? So we get a consensus here whether we're...
The trouble with government is government. Or I simply put, we had the opportunity to have somebody work on the comp plan and the other thing, and he was working on it. He's no longer with us for whatever reason. Would he, will travel, had traveled down the road by now if we were to maintain that same person? I've employed hundreds of people, hundreds, in this county. That particular person to me, unless you find someone else better, is there. And nobody, there's a personality thing involved again, I guess, but you got to move above the personalities. I spoke to Ed about it. He says, well, I'll put it out for bid. I said, I don't care what you do. You don't have to pick that guy, but the son of a gun is here looking at us. If you make a mistake, you make a mistake. The major mistake is you're not doing a damn thing. You won't talk about it. So that's my suggestion. I'm not making it on behalf of the petitioner. I'm not doing that. If we fix the comp plan and the other, and the other thing has no, no bearing on this gentleman whatsoever. Always asking for the privilege of coming back and stating his case. That's always doing, if you say...
Are we saying, what are you saying that we, you heard what Sharon said or what you're saying? Tell me what you're, can you explain?
I will give him the opportunity to come back. That's all. Is it against the rules and regulations? Maybe.
That's what I meant earlier by bending the rules. That I...
I understand what you're saying. You asked me a question. That's my answer.
We have two different conversations.
If it's wrong, it's wrong, but that's my answer.
Can we just call the vote and then...
Well, we have two conversations, one about hammocks, one about procedures in a legal matter that we've already decided.
I just, I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is the gentleman has some information for what he wants.
He's got to have his time. Everybody else spoke, so that's why I'm saying Henry needed, go ahead, keep going. I'm just telling Elizabeth that...
Well, anyway, that's, I mean, if it's incorrect, it's incorrect. I don't know. In this particular case, the gentleman wants to come back and say, look, this is what I produced to you that didn't have the opportunity to do it in the first go round. Does he?
So I think that the question you're asking, Henry, is, let's move this, to move this forward, is do we want to allow this man to come back forward with, with his issue? I would like to say, no, I don't think that is appropriate because it's bending the rule that's, that's on the books right now. That's...
It is a slippery slope, and if we do this for one, we're going to be asked to do it for others.
I understand.
Dangerous.
All right, so now, so put that aside, Henry. So that's over with. Now, what vice mayor said, let me just get your commitment of what she was saying to do where she was talking about changing to match the county to where this would be, that you're fixing the code, basically.
Yes.
All right. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, John, if there's a consensus of three of us, are we okay with that?
That's actually not on the agenda, so why are we having this?
We're off the topic that's on the agenda. We shouldn't be considering that at this point.
I have the right to ask the staff to look into it, though.
Well, we can do that, but, you know, our rules are like, you put it on the agenda, we stay, we stay on...
Let's vote on it, let's vote on the staff, looking into it, and then it's done.
But that's not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is discussion regarding Airport Road.
I understand, but we're not, Mark, we're not asking, alls we're going to do is ask the staff what Ed said, what vice mayor wanted to do was to ask the staff, and John said if there's a consensus, that we could ask the staff to look into what she's talking about. Is that okay? John, are we okay?
Yeah, I mean, this was provided as an alternative to the, as part of the discussion item that Councilmember Rosenthal brought up.
The rules, yeah, if three of you want to do that, you can do that.
Yeah, I don't, there's no motion or anything. If the three of you are okay with it, I mean, the staff can look into it, but just in terms of timing, it probably wouldn't be until after the New Year, just because, like I said, we'd have to go to the LPA. There's an analysis, so I just want to make sure there's a understanding of the realistic timing on that.
I'm not going to oppose what you're trying to do. I mean, I'm not going to vote for it, but I'm just saying, if you, if, you have the right to do it, and I recognize that, but you should also recognize that the staff has a limited capacity. And, you know, we've given them a lot of assignments. We haven't defined the priorities, which one first, because something's going to get pushed off the table.
We'll, we'll move on.
He just, he just contradicted yourself. Now you want them to do this whole plan all over again, but now you just said they don't have the time. So when is this whole plan going to get done? How many more years down the road?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I say we fix the problems that come up in front of us.
So, John, let's, so for direction, so we can move on here, you, Ed, do you understand what we were saying? You got it?
I think so.
Okay, all right.
Again, now, now...
Again, now, now, we're gonna have.
It's gotta come back at a later date.
Right, but it will be a later date, because not only is Daniel not even available right now, and they have their existing workload, and I'm not sure of the workload that Emily has with her staff at the county. So I'm not sure how quickly the, the coordination can get together, but clearly we will have it.
Okay.
We, I think we got it. I think we understand what the, what it is.
We're moving on then, all right? You okay, Henry? Did you?
No, I'm not okay. Let's get it done. Yes or no? She says no? He says no?
We're not saying yes to rehearing it. We're saying yes to change the structure of what we have, to look into it to see if maybe.
To allow him to rehear it.
Not until we check, fix and adopt what Monroe County has, then he can come back.
If we change the law, he can then come back based on the new law.
Better solution than bending the rules. And it is, I know it's bending the rules.
Elizabeth, I know how you feel about it, but I understand. But, you know, right now, we're moving at a snail's pace, and if we can fix something, we do it.
Okay, so I think we, we've got it. We gave them direction. All right, so I think we're ready to move on. Thanks, Henry. Okay.
My only commitment was to bring it to your attention. That's all I committed for.
Okay.
I've done it.
Mission accomplished.
You did it, Henry. You accomplished it. Okay, so let's move on. Okay, discussion regarding council compensation referendum, Vice Mayor Mahoney.
Van, I'm not bringing this back up again. My suggestion was to change it from 2,000 to 1,500, and you may have a shot at that. And, you know, because no one's gonna go for 2,000. And that was it. That's it. And I know you said no already, but, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect this council, it would affect the next council. So at least they got a shot at 1,500 instead of 2,000. That's all. Simple.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
It's fine. I don't, I.
You're okay?
Sure.
Okay. Henry?
Whatever.
All right, I'll go. I'm okay with it. Mark?
What are we doing? What is the action?
Action is to, to, that it goes for 1,500.
It's to give staff direction to bring back a revised ordinance at 1,500 instead of 2,000.
Do you wanna do that? I won't oppose it. I probably won't vote for it, but I won't oppose you to do that.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So that one's done then, right?
Good.
Okay, all right. All right, so new manager description and pay scale drafted by Wyserota. John, are you, it looks like Elizabeth tab.
So, that was just.
Was that pulled, or?
No.
Okay, all right.
That was a request, considering that we are moving forward, I hope, in hiring a permanent manager to have Wyserota look at the current job description, and then propose a pay scale that might be more sensible, so that it can come to us to edit, rather than have us have to have this conversation about a reasonable wage for this new manager. That they might draft something that makes sense, with some incentives and some deliverables that are, that are associated with that pay. Additionally, they, I would like to see that contract updated. I, I mean, presumably, they, your company drafted that contract that we used for our last manager, and there was some ambiguity around it, and I would like for that to be, you wrote that? You had no legal input? I don't, okay. So then, let me say that I would like to have a legal analysis from our law firm, if it's acceptable, to use a, a more standardized contract for our manager. Would we be in agreement with giving that direction?
I, I would just make a comment, and then we can do whatever you like. I think that contract that we used on the last manager originated with Roger Bryan. It was, it was, it was a template.
I thought Henry just said he wrote it.
Well, he, 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 I think they started with a template. I mean, I don't know that Henry sat down with a legal pad and did every word. If he did, my hat off to you.
I didn't.
But, but he, he took what we had before, and he improved on that. So, I don't know that our legal staff, or I don't know that Wyserota had a lot of input on that. Secondly, you know, some of the detail that is included in there comes from us. I, I mean, I guess they're standards, but I think we need to tell them what we think is the pay range. I don't know that they can tell us that. Maybe they can.
Would you, because, you know, sometimes it's easier to edit than it is to create. Would it be acceptable to task the Wyserota with coming back with a document that we can then edit? So if they say, let's, you know, start a wage at $75,000, it's easier to, you know, to edit that, rather than create it, considering how many voices are on the table here?
Well, I, I think it's probably a good idea to have at least some kind of a draft contract that we can agree on, and then certainly something, I'm, I'm sure the candidates are gonna be very curious about, you know.
That's what I'm talking.
What, what we're gonna be getting into. I mean, I, I think they should know in advance the kind of terminology, the terms that we're thinking about. I'll have more to.
We're in total agreement. That's the direction we're giving to our.
Well, one last question. Didn't we already advertise a pay range?
I hope not.
It was, it was quite a large range, so I think that then we can, I, I think that it was a range.
Yeah, I'll have to look, and I think, I'll look, I, I don't have it in front of me, I'll have to, the advertisement, I'll have to look. But certainly, as I understand it, you're asking for us to, I mean, we can revise, update, I mean, Elizabeth, we had communicated with this, about this before. Look at the job description, potentially come back with some potential revisions. For the pay scale, I'm, I'm understanding what we would do is obviously, part of it is, we would look at other municipalities and see what, you know, kind of other similarly situated municipalities are paying as well, so we kinda get an understanding there. And then, obviously, you all have a, the council has a, an appetite for whatever that pay range may be. And then, yes, in terms of the contract, you know, we would draft anything, at least the way that we would do it, I mean, any contract with regard to a manager would be tailored for that specific manager. I mean, cuz there's obviously some negotiations that go along with it. There's different council members that make up the council, so you all are gonna have a different idea based upon prior experiences as to what you're looking for. So, yeah, we can prepare something, and I fully expect that we will get input from the five of you, and as long as there's a, you know, whatever consensus we reach in terms of the draft contract, we can proceed and we'll negotiate with the, whoever you all ultimately select. So, yeah, I understand.
Pretty straightforward.
I like that.
Henry?
The most important thing that you have to consider, and I said it when we were talking about it the last time, what I added to that contract and what I omitted to the contract was designed for that one person. What he wanted, I took some away. Some things that he did not want, and I added to it, because I knew better. It was designed strictly for that one person. And because he had X amount of dollars as, as pay, and he had X amount of dollars for housing, that's two separate issues. What he wound up was well in excess of $200,000 a year because of his housing. I took $20,000 away from him as his retirement fund. First time that ever happened, it just, it was just there. But I increased his housing. What's the difference between the two? It's like $4,000 was nothing. So all the way through, that's what I did, for this gentleman and, and one and only. Everybody that gives forth with an application is different. Their requirements are different.
Okay, but are you okay with them doing a draft, and then we can edit it, the five of us edit it? Are you okay with that?
I guess you wanna start someplace, but, but.
Okay.
I guarantee you, we have seven applications right now. And if I were to do it again, I'm not saying I have to do it again, but there are stipulations that are different between seven people. I mean, your guide isn't always what they had before, or the response of all your, but, living here is altogether different. Doesn't even come close. You get it out of Monroe County, it's altogether different. I mean, if, if you wanna start with a base of whatever it is, I guess you can.
All right.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that, just because his housing allotment was abnormal, that was not his take-home. And once you get to the take-home, there's so many things involved with it as part of what's included in his, in his salary. Everything changes. On a federal level, everything changes.
All right, so with that being said, I think we're all in agreement. So, John, you, you got your marching orders. Okay, thank you, Henry. Let's move on then to Dee, which is Councilman Greg and Councilman Rosenthal relating tea table. So, Henry, you're.
I've said enough. Go ahead.
Oh, you said him. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so, Greg.
I, I just wanted to bring up something that came to my attention. Last week, I received an email from a local contractor who had worked on that island some years ago, digging a swimming pool. And he, they, in the process, they discovered human remains. And the human remains were buried back and left alone, and the pool was dug in another location. Given the rich history of that island, and what has happened there, you know, was, it was a federal, there was a federal, it was, I don't know if you wanna call it a naval station, but it was in the 1830s. It, you know, it didn't look like Boca Chica. But it was, it was a federal facility there. That is the location from where the Indians launched their attack on, on Indian Key in 19, in 1840, and slaughtered the people that lived there. So there's a lot of history there. I don't know, obviously, who, what kind of remains those were. They could be someone who was a naval personnel. It could have been a Native American. It could have been a pioneer. But what I do know is that the law is very, very protective of human remains, especially if they have archaeological significance on historic site. So the reason I bring it up is, in fairness to the owner of the property, you know, we've also, we've already heard about the appearance at the LPA, about potential development there. And before that process goes much further down the road, again, in fairness to the owner of the property, I wanted to make him aware, it's a public record. I got this information in my village email, so it's a public record. And I just didn't think it was right to not mention it. The law also requires, if you know about these things, to report them to whatever authority. Depending on how old the remains are, older, 75 years older, more or less, it, it may come under the jurisdiction of the medical examiner. So I, I reported this to the manager and, and to the village attorney. I don't know what needs to be done there, but if you don't handle it correctly, it's a felony. So I don't wanna have a felony. So I'm putting it out there, and whatever happens, happens. If we need to look at it, we can look at it. It would seem to me that at a minimum, if, if there is a development application for the property, we should make review of that issue a condition of that in the future. So.
Do we know if this has been? We know if this has been reported before?
I don't know.
When Mr. Ister?
It was reported to Irving Ister, and according to my source, he came out, he identified what was a femur and a pelvis and some other smaller bones. He, his recommendation was to put the remains back in their resting place, cover it up, and dig the swimming pool somewhere else. And that's what happened. So.
So you want my shoveling days?
So, I, I.
Is that the direction you're giving to our planning department, or someone in our staff to, to move forward in, in researching that?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, I personally would like to see an answer to that. I mean, human remains are, you know, that's, that's, that's a sacred burial for somebody, you know.
It sounds like we don't have a choice if that, if that, that that's just what has to be done.
I don't know what all the choices are, but I don't want to ignore it. I want it to be handled fairly. I want the person, the owners of the property to know about it and to address it. I know there was some activity there this weekend. There was some concern about that. So, I, I, I mean, that's very, very, very important to deal with remains of either Native Americans or military personnel or anyone.
Ed, can you maybe comment on how, how you might manage that?
I, I just think, I turn it over to the staff, let them investigate what our obligations are and what our options are, and then they can tell us what we should do. But I just wanna make sure that I'm not, I wanna report it to the medical examiner if that's required, cuz I don't wanna get charged with a felony for not doing that.
Yeah, as Councilman Greg said, he did bring it up to John and I. Haven't had a real chance to look into, I mean, something new for me. I haven't had, I haven't had that one come up before, but we're, we can certainly look at, you know, who do we have to contact? I mean, what do we need for, what do we need for, to try to say what documented it? I mean, if it's an email, if it's, if it was a conversation, who exactly in the state do we need to contact? We haven't gotten that far yet. As I think Councilman Greg said, he, when this would really need to be dealt with is if at such time as there was gonna be a development on the site. But now that we're aware of it, I mean, it's, we can, we can start to figure out which department or departments around the state of Florida or wherever that we have to contact. We just, at this point, we're not sure.
All right, so, Mark, are you finished? Cuz Henry's gonna go next.
Yeah, I just want, I just want us to address, are, is it, do we have a requirement that we need to fulfill by reporting it to whatever the authorities are? Let the staff do that, cuz that's our duty. Beyond that, it's up to you guys if you wanna do something else.
All right, Henry, your turn.
I concur. My problem was not anyone in particular. It, it was the procedure that she followed, and we have to make a procedure that keeps her out of trouble, so to speak. Cuz right now, I have.
It's her?
It's her.
I'm sorry, Sheila. The, the plan.
Oh, you're talking about the, the.
Oh, you're talking about the flood, the flood zone.
The building official.
Flood zone.
What is the issue?
The issue is, number one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. You gotta sit, Van, you gotta sit behind me. A letter came down in January the 20th. Nobody, I mean, nobody was aware of that letter. And the letter was requesting certain things that Sheila thought she was properly, probably in her right to sign that request. The problem was, absolutely nobody saw that letter, January the 20th. I asked Mr. Yates, cuz I had an opportunity a couple of days ago to ask him. He had no implication that he saw that letter either. And she signed the request on the behalf of this community, because she's used to doing that. She was not trying to evade the responsibility. This, this, as far as she's concerned, it's her job. She sent me her job in an email to explain it to me. I am not looking to say she did something wrong. But the fact remains is, something of that enormity, and maybe she didn't know what, what she was signing that way, as to what the request is from the applicant. But we all know what the request actually is about for the applicant. She signed it. When she got the letter, she also got an envelope that was stamped for FEMA. And her request was, please sign here and send it forward. The application, the consequences of that is really enormous. So now, what do we do? Do I say to our council to write a letter to FEMA, requesting that they back up as, as to what decisions they may have made on behalf of the applicant? I mean, she signed, the letter went out on the 20th, and I, well, I've forgotten, she, maybe she signed it on the 24th. It's somewheres here. That's what it is. She signed it on the 24th. Boom, boom. I mean, it's not her fault in a sense of words, but the procedure is faulty procedure. Now, we're in a fix rate now. I do know that as far as they're permitting, which, what they want, has to be reviewed by us. So there is a safeguard there. If we wanna retain certain things as far as that island goes, we have not crossed that bridge. But as far as the, the water and what she is responsible for, we may have a problem. So, that's, I just wanna bring it to your attention. Absolutely no, we didn't know it. Nobody knew it. So that, we're lacking there as far as the procedure goes. So anyway, I'm just bringing it to your attention that we have to deal with this. So, that's the reason I put it down.
All right, Henry, thank you. Is that it? You're finished?
I hope so. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so can we, let's move on to, okay. So can we, let's move on to, okay. Right now, we're moving on to strategic plan accomplishments. Councilman Greg.
So, this is related to our earlier discussion regarding the hammock thing. I kind of already spoiled my message here, but I'd had some conversations with Ed and others in the staff. And, you know, we're talking about where we want to go from here. We want to rewrite the comp plan, because the 2020 plan is dead by three years. And we want to revise provisions of the code, as we discussed earlier, about hammocks and other things, lots of other things. And it just seems most logical to start with policy and direction where we want to go, instead of throwing darts at a dartboard or piecemeal, or, I liked Elizabeth's phrase earlier, packets of problems. We're dealing with pockets of problems. So we should try to identify what the problems are and assign a priority to each one. We talked about the Eisenhower matrix that I brought up a while back. Maybe you liked it, maybe you didn't. Fine. But the proper place to start is not at the, at the, at the very end. It's at the very beginning with policies. You know, we've never talked about this. I included a little piece in our materials here about our strategic plan. And it's, it was from 2017 through this year. So it's overdue for revision and upgrade. You know, how do we know where we're going if, where we want to go if we don't know where we've been and discuss policies? You know, we have a lot of things on the table, a lot of different directions. The issues today aren't the same as they were in 2017, or 2007, or 1997, when we incorporated. And we just have the great blessing of someone that hopefully will be coming to work for us and has a tremendous amount of experience and success with that in our county. I mean, an expert. We couldn't ask for a better. Why don't we just take advantage of that? And I, and I do appreciate the vice mayor's impatience, and I say that word with appreciation and not with intentional insult. We're all impatient. I'm impatient. I've been, I've been trying to do things here for a long time, and mostly failures, but a few successes in there. That's the nature of business in the government. It doesn't move like a business. But to do it right, if you want to do it right and you want to get it right, start at the very beginning with a strategic plan, and we work up from there. So that's what I'm asking. Can we do that? Can we, if we're going to have Ms. Matthews join us, can we engage her to get us started? And if not, a consultant or something, or both. But I would just like to have some direction from the council as to what you really want to do. I mean, I understood what the vice mayor said earlier, let's fix some little problems. There's more than one solution to every problem. My dad used to tell me that all the time. But we need to do something.
I think all of us are in agreement, Mark, about a strategic plan.
So, okay, let's do it.
All right.
May I hear from the others?
Real, I'm personally being challenged right now not to say something really snarky. But you know what? I'm going to overcome that, and I'm going to just be civilized. Yeah, Mark, I think it's a great idea. Like, you know, super, let's do it. And so what I've noticed is that if we don't give very clear direction that it's a priority, then it doesn't get done. Again, just had this conversation with our manager and our planning department that they're not hearing what I, what I have thought is some consensus, we would like to start that process. Yes, I'm in full, full favor of that. And then, and then I think that we should put a timeline on that, because timelines are important. Otherwise, Sharon will get nothing, and we'll be, you know, sitting here next year with nothing. I would also like to point out that, that government can multitask. So while we can work on a strategic plan, which is, you know, something I have been saying for some time, we should address our comprehensive plan. I mean, I had a nice conversation with Mr. Quick, who's talking about things that aren't even legal anymore, that are, that are in our comprehensive plan. So I would request that we task our staff and our new interim manager to work on both of those things.
Well, I asked the similar questions, and the staff wants to know from us, what policy decisions can we provide to them to give them the direction to do what you ask?
And I would like to respond to that, because just watching this, the way we can communicate, clearly, we, we have, we're challenged as a group to give direction. And this is where I think we bring in an expert to help guide that conversation. So if the staff is waiting for us to write the strategic plan, that's never going to happen. Let's be clear about that.
Yeah, but we're talking about somebody that's been doing this for the county, and is the head.
Exactly.
Head county strategic planner.
Right. And I'm sure she's not going to wait for us to come up with it to sign off.
No, no.
I would tell you that I don't know everything. I know very little about a few things. And I did participate in the original process, and it involved, I don't, I don't know what it means, charrettes, these little meetings, but people came in a room like this, I don't know if this room was built yet, and we had poster boards, we broke out into little groups, and we got a lot of, over many meetings, huge input from the community about where we wanted to go. That is the basic thing we have to start with. And it's not the five of us deciding what we do. We got to have that input. I mean, we've been getting a lot of it as.
These cities are built like that in the state of Florida, where they started with charrettes before ever it was incorporated and things.
Well, can we do one in January? I'll put a marker on the table. Let's do it. Let's get Ms. Matthews on board, if she's willing, and let's try to do it in January. New Year's resolution. Start from the beginning with a strategic plan.
Does everybody agree, Henry? Are you okay?
Do it in January.
Yeah. Okay. Mark, we got?
Maybe I should shut up while I'm ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Holy comment?
John, you help me out?
This is discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So we're moving on now to village attorney, village manager communications. Ed, are you up first?
Yes. So, been working with Evie, she was unavailable this evening. So I will put out a suggestion of how this meeting could go, and you all tell me what you like, what you don't like, start it over, whatever you want. But we had to get somewhere. So we are looking currently at 10 to 12 of the applicants still being interested. And we did hear the direction that you all definitely wanted to have them all at a meeting, all by Zoom. So with that, the idea would be to schedule all of them on the 14th. And we have, to date, we, we received three questions from the council. So thought would be, we send the questions to each of the applicants ahead of time, instruct them that they have however much time you think that is, 10 minutes, 15 minutes. If we get past that, it's going to be a very late meeting. So you may want to, you may want to think about 10 minutes and then giving them like a bonus minute, whatever you want to do. But if you go past 15 minutes for the entire person, you're going to start to push towards, you're going to start getting, you're going to push towards 10 o'clock. So the thought was, for example, we do the first five, that's going to take us till a little after 7 o'clock, take a 20-minute break, and then finish it off. That would be about 9:30. And then, after that, take however, what you all think, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever you think, to pick a maximum of five. So we could have ready for all of you your sheet with your name on it, and the list of all, let's just say, we get all 12, we get all 12, you pick up to five. Those would be turned into the clerk. The clerk could then determine which are the top, if you want to do five, I'm just throwing out five, you say, the top five would come back for interviews. And then also on that sheet of paper, Evie will have ready dates. She's looking at getting dates available already in both December and January. And then you could pick, say, your number one choice, your number two choice, your number three choice, turn it into the clerk. She could then, you know, report back what those are. But of course, that discussion has to be settled by all of you, because I don't think we can just, I think that one's a little more squirrely to just say that's the top vote getter. But that would be the idea, so that we could get, you could, approximately 10 o'clock, you could get out of there with, starting at 5:30, you could get done with 12 individuals and, and be done and still, I know you all have concerns about being like, doing a lot of things after 10 o'clock. So that would be right around 10 o'clock. So what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
Could we do eight minutes per person?
I don't think that matters.
No? Two or 10 or two? I mean, 10 or eight?
I guess the first thing, I guess the first question, I'd like, I think the first part would be, are you all okay? And so far, we've got, we've got three questions. And thank you, Councilwoman Jolyn, she's got three questions that we've got, that we submit those ahead of time, because I think it puts them all on a little more level playing field as well, because they're all in order. And it'll, I think, it'll also let you know who's doing their homework, because if they sound, if you spring a question on them, if they have no idea, that's one thing. But if you give them days, days, and you get an answer, and it's clear they don't know anything about the village, they haven't done their homework.
How about, do we have to have one council person give all the questions? I mean, I think there's, there's five of us up here.
I understand that.
So there was a request for questions?
There was a request of Evie.
And did no one else send in questions?
Right. Evie only got from Councilwoman Jolyn.
I was planning to send in at least two questions, but I was out of town for almost three weeks, and I didn't want to think about it while I was away. But I will now.
I just want to say that.
Well, I was out of town, too.
I just happened to send them in, so I'm not like.
I was in town and didn't do it.
So, so here's, here's where we're at, then. So as of today, when I spoke with Evie, we have the three questions, and she said that she did request them. If we don't get the questions, if we get the questions after, I guess if we.
Can we hear the questions?
I guess what we could do is, we could, I guess you could call it an emergency, we could get question, additional questions, and John, jump in if I say something I shouldn't. We get additional questions, and then at Thursday night, you all decide which questions. If you're, if, if, if we get more, because if you try to ask six, seven, eight questions of these people.
Yeah.
By the time you get done on, when we start the meeting on Tuesday, it will be Wednesday. You can guarantee it.
How many people are we talking?
10 to 12. We have 10 confirmed, and we're still waiting on two more. So 10 to 12 applicants.
And the questions, I suspect, I don't know for sure, are chosen out of the nine that the HR director asked of me to send her the questions. I have nine questions that I answered or asked of everyone. She asked me to send those nine questions that I used.
Right.
In her preparation. Just tell me something.
Well, my understanding is those nine questions were already asked of all the applicants. That is not true?
No, it's not true, because my list of questions, I did not send to any council members. But I was asked to send the nine questions that I used, along with the two people that worked with me, to the HR director. What she did with them is, it's her business.
Okay. Then. Are you okay with that on Thursday?
Do we need to have?
We can speak with Evie, but I, my understanding is the same as Ed's, that he, that I believe she asked those of the candidates already as part of the process. So those were already dealt with.
Her investigation.
Yeah, yeah.
So, sorry. That's.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, so the three pending ones were the ones that we have received that haven't been answered, were the ones that we received from council.
That's fine.
Okay. Ed, one thing that, I know you mentioned December, you know, I'm personally not interested in December, because everybody is going out of town. Everybody's with family. Everybody's got things going on during the holidays.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. That's why it's all up to the five of you.
Yeah, trying to make a decision after you've just been here for four or five hours and make a decision that night, I don't think, I, me personally, now, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think this is something that we need to put some time in ourself and make an intelligent decision. Not sit here in five, 20 minutes, 30, 15 minutes after we've interviewed them and, and make our decision.
Then we would, well, as it stands, without another meeting, then that decision would have to be delayed until the December, is it 10th or 12th, the December meeting, because you don't have another meeting until then.
They have to come in January.
Right. And again, that's, I mean, if, if, I'm just throwing some suggestions out there. It's all up to you to decide how you want to do it, but that would push it, that would push your decision for the five and the time to December. Whatever the wish of the council is, we will go forward with that.
Let's hear from everybody.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think we should try to do this thing as soon as possible. When I was part of it a few years back, we had 75 applications. We pulled it down to five or six. We gave the five or six to the council. They were invited to come here in person. They gave a presentation that night. And the only thing I find wrong with that is we kept them until we decided. And I just don't think that's appropriate. Do what you got to do. Leave town, we'll let you know. That's the only thing that I found, that I didn't care for that idea. But we had 75 applications. I think it took us a month to go through them. We wound up with five. We gave it to the council. The council invited them in person, and they were right out there by the pool. And we also invited their wives as well, because I've always said that, it's very, very important.
Or their husband.
And.
Or their husband.
Yes, whatever. But I'm just saying, yes, that, that is extreme. I have employed a lot of people whose wife is looking to shop and walk down a, down, you know? And we don't have that. And just that we have a conversation piece, the guy that was sending out the letters to the congressman years ago, I hired his brother, truthfully. His brother worked for me. Anyway, that's beside the point. I think we should make every effort in not looking to January or February or whatever, because some of these people we might want, and some of these people we not, normally not even be available if we wait too long. So if you're looking at somebody and say, that's your choice, and he's, oh, I took another job.
My experience is that after Thanksgiving, people kind of get into holiday modes, and, you know, we do have a life, too. And there are, each one of us have family here, you know? So, I mean, I'm just going to use myself as an example. We're going for a week over Thanksgiving. My kids, my, all my kids, my grandkids, everywhere, we do it every year.
Have a good time, but you're coming back.
Yeah, I'm coming back, but, yeah.
Let's get it done.
Okay. And, but December, man, I mean, on the 20th, when I worked for the Aqueduct, they shut us down on the 20th. We could not work anymore until the beginning of the new year.
I don't care about the Aqueduct.
I know you don't care about the Aqueduct, but I'm just using that as an example.
I understand.
All right. So, Vice Mayor, you and.
I, I'm with you on the holiday thing. It's going to be distracting. I mean, this is a big decision, not just for us, but for the applicants as well. So getting too intense before the holiday, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'll listen to all input on it, but I wouldn't want to make a final decision or get to the final five or four, or whatever it is, until after January starts.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Vice Mayor?
From my understanding, they come for like, three days. So, what, three days? I mean, we're, I mean, we're right on top of it. I just have a hard time with, I agree with them in a way. I'm sorry. I would say January myself, because I don't see people, I want the public to come, too, and people have plans. So who knows who can make three days in a row doing stuff?
They could do a meet and greet and.
Yeah.
I have a comment that I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
You know, I certainly respect everyone's holiday schedule, but most people actually continue to function at the beginning of December with their jobs and their children and their lives, and then the holidays, that Christmas, New Year, that's at the end of the month. Could we consider, not only out of respect for the people who are applying, because this process has been going on for months, having that November meeting, taking a couple days. process has been going on for months, having that November meeting, taking a couple days to review the Zoom if you need to, and then having those people come that first week in December. I mean, the time that we spend with them is going to be, you know, not that time consuming. We're not taking three days out of our lives to, to spend time with these people. And that would give them the opportunity to enjoy their holidays knowing if, if we decide that someone is suitable, if we want to make an offer. It's, we have no guarantee that we're even going to make an offer. So we take that time in December when actually there are even hotel rooms available for these people and then bring them in in January if, if, if we find that someone is, is suitable. Because if we don't, then we're going to have to start another process. And I, I might point out that after this, this session on the 14th, that, I mean, very soon after that is when we should be making our decision because we just met them. We've just met them via Zoom. That would be the time to, to, to make some choices. I, I think we're up for this and I think that, you know, much more time just prolonging this is simply that. It's prolonging the, the interim nature, so.
All right. So what are we going to do? We got, there's three of us that kind of feel the same way?
Yep.
I would think, I would think three days in the sunshine would certainly add to their Christmas vacation. Just me, with the exception of, there was a couple Africans that are from Florida and one of them is not too far away. But anyway, just a thought, that's all.
It's like everything else, we can keep discussing or we can vote.
Well, let's vote. I don't care.
Well, I think there's already consensus.
It sounds like three of us want to go after the first.
I, I feel like, and, and I don't either, but I mean, when was the last time you applied for a job that took six months to even get the interview? I mean, this has, this has been ongoing. I, I mean, in the nature of, we are, you know, looking forward to embrace a new, you know, a new manager. It's bizarre that we would, that we would drag this out any longer.
But with the holidays coming, people aren't focused on that. They're not, I don't know, that's just my personal opinion. And I, you know what? If they want the job and it's, it's not December 15th and it's the second week of January, then, I mean, if I'm looking for a job that I really want, then you know what? If it's a month later, then I'm going to do it a month later.
Let's call a vote and move it on.
Okay, so Marnie, let's, we're going to, hey, John, should we just call the roll then and vote on this? Okay, so, so the, the motion would be that we would do this in January, bring them back in January and not in December.
Okay, yeah, if you guys want to do it by a motion, like a procedural motion, yeah, you can do that.
Okay, all right.
Is that a motion?
About the question point, if someone, if you want to put questions in, then can we agree that you send your questions in, they're, they're given randomly to these people who can prepare in advance to make a presentation essentially? And Evie is going to ask those questions while we listen, that have already, they've already been given the questions that are random?
If they.
Is that fine, guys?
We don't have any communication with them, correct?
Well, I, I think if, I think, I think the, the good idea about having Evie do it is it's going to keep moving the meeting along so you get out of here by 10.
Okay.
I mean, if, if you have the questions, because if you, if you, if you don't, I mean, again, you can do whatever you want, but I'm not confident you're going to be out of here by 10 if we do it in a different manner. Because things will go. I mean, however you want to do it, but that would be if, if, again, so.
Did we do it earlier today? Did we start it earlier?
Sure.
You guys can.
But as of right now, I mean, so as of, just recall, as of right now, we have, we have three questions. That's what we have. So unless we get more.
He's got nine more. And Henry's got his, he'll resend.
And so then on.
Thursday, we can narrow it down.
So, so just to, to move the conversation, are we in agreement that we'll all put our questions in? Evie will send them to these applicants randomly and she can make a decision about making sure they're sort of equivalently faired up for the, and then those people will basically answer the questions to us and we're keeping it to 10 minutes per person?
I have a, I have a question on what you're suggesting. So what you, are you saying you want to have, let's say there's 15 questions, you want to have Evie decide or would you all want to come back on Thursday and you all decide which ones you want asked?
I think we should decide.
What happened to the three questions?
We have them, but now I'm hearing that there's going to be some more. So we, what I want to make sure is that the applicants all get the same questions and that they're the questions you all want. Because if I get three, 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 three and three and you try to give them 15 questions and you think they're going to be done in 10 minutes, well, we all know that's impossible.
Yeah.
So is that.
Also, what are those questions? I mean, maybe they're, maybe these are good enough. I mean, this isn't a perfect process. This is, but what, what, what are the questions? I forget what I asked.
Just do that Thursday.
I can go through them right now.
What are the questions?
Okay, so the first question is what experience do you have in developing and implementing long-term strategic plans?
Oh, that's you.
Yeah, they're your questions.
I'm just asking what.
Good question, Elizabeth.
Well, thank you.
You want the other two? They're all good questions. She gave great questions. You want her other two?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So let's see, maybe, maybe we'll be all good. Okay. Question two is describe a situation when you have had to make a decision based on sound governmental practices that would improve the long-term future of your project, town, et cetera, when faced with pressure from special interest groups. That's number two. And then number three is what are the top three challenges facing Alamo Rada in your opinion?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, so, so John, so we make sure, we're going to call the roll now. What this is, is the, on the thing of doing in December, okay, so.
Wait a second here, what happened to the questions?
Okay, the.
We're jumping around here. Why don't we do this with the questions? He might have some good questions. Henry's got nine. Let's just hear them again on Thursday and pick three out of that.
Can we, can they send, can you send the questions in advance via email?
We would, after Thursday, the idea.
Before Thursday.
Oh, when soon as we.
I, I would say the way we would do that would be, you would want to post them so that they're posted publicly. Because otherwise I don't want it to be a communication outside the sunshine between council members. I think we could just add it to the agenda and then it'd be available. So yeah, that way you all have them and then there's no question.
So if you can get them to me by tomorrow, that'd be great.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so now can we move on to do what we were going to do, John? So, so.
We already agreed.
What, what the motion was that they want to take a vote on was that, that we wanted, the motion's going to be to do it in January, have them come back in January.
For the in-person interviews for the finals, yeah. There, there was not a second for that motion though, so you need a second for a roll call.
So we need a second. All right. Okay, John, can you repeat it?
The, the motion was to have the in-person interviews for the finalists for the village manager position take place after the first of the year.
Okay, all right, so motion and second. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
No.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
Okay. All right, so we want a break? All right, can we take a?
Can we get through the consent agenda?
Can.
Yes.
Can we, or how about if we do the thing with Kimberly?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
First, okay, because she's been waiting a long time. Okay? Okay, so Ed, you are up again with Chris Matthews.
Yes, I'd like to introduce from Monroe County, Senior Director of Strategic Planning and Director of Libraries, Kimberly Matthews.
Thank you, Ed. Welcome, Kimberly.
Hi. Oh, that is, that is fun, whoever said that. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. It is also a pleasure to have been voluntored by Roman for the next, next up at bat. And as mentioned, I do, I am the strategic planner for the county. I did successfully do a strategic plan that runs from 2020 to 2025. I think it's managed to accomplish quite a bit for our county with, of course, the work of the entire team. And it was all based on community input, so that's certainly something that I would be more than equipped and happy to help the village with. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
I'd just say that I had a really good conversation with you today. I feel really positive about you and your abilities and to utilize you to your fullest extent we can, so thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I'm just happy that you're willing to work with us and I really look forward to that. Thank you.
As do I.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you sure you want to do this?
Yes, I am absolutely certain that I want to do this.
I've known this lady for a long time, so.
So Kimberly, I'll, I'll just, I'll make it short and sweet. I, I know all the transportation work you did as well when, when Dave Rice was mayor and the library, the strategic planning, everything, your history. So I think we're, we're glad to have you.
Excellent, well, thank you very much and I look forward to working with you. And if there are specific directives that you have for me, goals or objectives beyond, you know, beginning the efforts of strategic planning, which certainly can't be finalized and finished in two months, but certainly happy to kick that off and get that going and moving along. But if there is anything specific that the council would like for me to work on, please just, my door will always be open, my phone is always on and I serve it the pleasure.
And we wish you well on your excursion that you're going and, and with your family that you said you're going with your parents.
Yes, yes, so I'm going to be spending a little time with the family and going to be having a little bit of fun in December, but I look forward to joining you all in January.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so what do we want, a five-minute break?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break then. Thank you.
All right, so I believe we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and Ed, what do we say we're going to do? Move that one tab?
Well, you have a choice, you can either, you can either, you can either move forward with the, you can either move forward with the consent items that weren't pulled yet, or you can hear those first if you'd like.
Can we move Kimberly up to whatever that tab is, so she, Elizabeth, didn't you, was that one of the ones you pulled?
Yeah, but, so, what happened, I mean, what just happened to the agenda online? Did, like, it's completely, like, where did tab 10 go? Did someone just make that change electronically because it's no longer showing on the agenda that I'm looking at electronically, so?
I rearranged them, it should be in the resolutions now, they should all be in order after tab 15. I moved nine.
But you can't do that, can, or, excuse me, can we, is that, are we allowed to do that during the middle of the meeting, because what they're looking at, I mean, the document, so electronically, what everyone is looking at publicly is now changed, but that shouldn't really, I don't think that's...
What we'd like to do is move 14 up to the very beginning, okay? That way Kimberly can, 14, all right?
That's not the question I'm saying, I'm saying that what just happened electronically and publicly, like, I don't think that that's the way we should be handling our agenda because it, it should be a notation within the, the agenda that was originally published that, whatever, it was polled, or, you know what I mean? The agenda just changed within the meeting.
I can put it back.
Well, I mean, I'm not, obviously, the lawyer, but I'm saying that what's happening electronically that is communicated to the public has just changed, and that's not what you guys are looking at.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been reorganized in like a real-time reorganization based upon the poll, I mean, you can do it either way, because, I mean, those have been polled, they're not on the consent agenda, so you...
So, okay.
There's not an, I don't think there's an issue with making the real-time adjustment based upon what the council did, but obviously there's a record of what it used to look like.
Where is that record? It's just changed.
Well, it wouldn't be, I mean, it would be in the old agenda, I mean, it's not there right now.
But the agenda is electronic, so where...
Yeah, I mean, there's versions, yeah, so it would be a version of, the prior version based upon, but, I mean, Marnie said she can put it back, so we can put it back, I don't, I don't think, we can put it back, it's not an issue.
Okay, all right, but here's the point, the reason I pulled those two items is because I had something to say before we all agree on them as a consent agenda, so could we talk about that procedure? And I just want to go back, and I don't need to pull tab 14, I'm fine with it, but tab 10 I have an issue with, and I'd like to just make a comment for clarification, and then, then I can put it back onto the consent agenda.
That's easy enough, yeah.
Are there, we all good with that?
Are we in agreement that we can move 14 up though, and do that first so that Kimberly can...
Actually, what Elizabeth's saying, she just has a comment, and then she would ask to put it back on consent agenda, so, did I hear that right? And then same thing, I think, with 10?
14, yeah, fine, I don't even need to say anything.
I pulled it as well, 14.
Oh, you did, oh, sorry, do you want to still pull?
Sure.
Okay, so, to tab 10, so, do we need to have that introduced before I can make my comments on it?
Yeah, well, yeah, let's do, so let's back up to tab 10 then, let me get there.
Well, wait.
So John, so that's Peter Frazo.
If it's going to be, if it's going to be moved back to consent agenda, I don't want to introduce it as a resolution, I don't want to introduce it individually now because then that will start the whole process of it being an individual item, but you can have, you can have the discussion, yeah.
Thank you for helping us understand the protocol here, we'll just keep it pulled and go along.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, are we okay that we're going to bring 14 up? Okay, so, okay.
We just want to do it first so she can go home.
You want me to just read, you want me to read 14?
Yes, John, please.
So, we're on tab 14...
Wait a minute.
Is a resolution, the Village Council of Alamoada Village of Islands, Florida, approving a renewal of the employee interchange agreement with Monroe County, Florida, for an additional 60 days, and permitting Kimberly Matthews to serve as interim village manager and providing effective date.
Henry, you want to, would you like to?
I just didn't think it belonged on the consent agenda, I'm not reading, that's it.
So he, he didn't feel like it belonged on the consent agenda? Can, I just, I do have a question, can you talk about the salary that Maria will receive? What kind of compensation she'll receive for her interim position?
That's not addressed in the, in this resolution, so there's not, there's not a, an increase based upon the resolution, I guess, I mean, historically, is Maria, you still here, was there a change in your salary when you, to make the adjustment when you, okay, during the time that you are interim? So that's usually, that's been done through HR and through the manager's office before, where there's an adjustment that's made to reflect the additional job duties during that timeframe, I don't know what the amount is.
We have no idea what, what she'll be compensated for.
I'm sure we could probably ask her what was done in the past, and I don't know, I don't have, I don't have that information without the HR director.
Well, I know she's doing finance director and manager.
Yeah, I hope she's being compensated appropriately for both positions, and it's, I'm surprised that we don't know what that is. Whatever it is, I mean, it would be good to know, right, because we're hiring and fiscally responsible, and this has nothing to do with Maria's, anything to do with Maria, it means, how can we not know that?
Good point.
You don't.
But...
But we should ask.
Yeah, okay, here we go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that information without speaking with the HR director, I just...
We, we will find out, but I don't know that we can get it tonight, should it hold up the decision tonight?
Oh, so do we need to pause on this until Thursday? I mean, what if we're magically paying her, you know, $4 million for this month? I mean, how can we not know this? This is just, this is just foundational, this is, we're hiring someone, we should know what we're being, what they're being paid for.
It would have to be approved by the council, I, I think, so...
It's usually commensurate with the additional duties that are, are done, but again, I don't have the specific amount without having the HR director here, but...
Well, and out of respect for Maria, she should know what, whether the amount that we're approving with this mystery amount is, is enough for her to do the job, right? Because we want to show respect.
I mean, it certainly wouldn't be more than the budgeted amount that you guys already have for the position, I mean, she's not being paid for two positions, it's, it's an additional amount, but...
You know what it is, it's, it's us taking for granted that this woman is going to just always be available to fill in for, you know, our inability to move an item forward, right? So out of respect for her, and to be fiscally responsible, we want to know what her pay is, so perhaps, good suggestion, we need to move this to Thursday.
Since she's done this three times before, it would suggest that whatever we did each time before, it would be, the fourth time would be consistent with that.
Well, the last time she said she was never going to do this again, so, not to be difficult, but this is, this is just basic.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about whether or not she would do it, I'm talking about her compensation, so each time she stepped up to take on the additional role of interim manager in addition to being the finance director, whatever that pay was, we kind of already set a policy in place for that, so I would presume we would continue that.
But we have no idea, so why don't we move it to Thursday?
I mean, one thing that we could do, Ed and I were talking, I mean, he suggested that whatever the percentage increase from her salary as a, the finance director to the, when she undertook the duties as an interim, that it be commensurate with what it was, or consistent with what it was the last time she did it.
So how long ago was that, that she did that?
That was leading into Ted, so it was, it was before Ted was hired, so a little over a year ago, yeah, a year and a half ago, I guess.
Right.
Is there no increase, COLA increase and all that?
Well, there is, that's why I said the percentage change difference between the two, because obviously I assume she's got a COLA increase on her salary.
Anybody signed up, Marnie?
Yes, I have Ben sign up particularly for this item. I also have Sue Miller sign up for consent, but since this is now pulled, I don't know whether Sue wants to speak on this one or not.
Sue, would you like to speak or not? No? Okay, thank you. All right, no other public comment, then public comment is closed. Council?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Okay. All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen? Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 0.
Now we are into the consent portion of the agenda. These items are of a routine nature and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are items Roman numeral nine, A through E, and then H and I, and those correlate with tabs four through eight, and then 11 and 12. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now.
Okay, well, Henry, you had asked 13 and nine.
That's correct.
Yeah, the ones that were pulled, I did not include.
Okay, so we're gonna come back to them. All right. All right, discussion? So this was four through eight, right, John?
Four through eight, and then tabs 11 and 12.
Four through eight, and 11 and 12.
We need public comment?
Uh, yeah, we do.
Yes.
Public comment is now open. Marnie?
I have Ben and Sue signed up for this one.
Okay.
Sue Miller, Lower Matticombi. I just have a general comment about public comment, that I think it would be beneficial to the people that watch these meetings on Zoom and the people that are here, if you would just mention what's in the consent agenda. And just a general statement, I, I think that I have, I have an issue with the consent agenda continually having, you know, there are some things that, that belong in the consent agenda, the minutes. I think it, it's worth mentioning the fact that there are minutes in your consent agenda this time for 14 meetings. And I congratulate the clerk for getting caught up, because that's really amazing to see 14 meetings of minutes. There, there are a number of people, of items in the consent agenda that are just changing contracts to comply with some new Florida law. And I think that belongs in the consent agenda. One of the things that I don't think should be in the consent agenda is any item where you're waiving competitive bidding. It bothers me that you waive competitive bidding and we, the taxpayers, expect there to be competitive bidding so that we can be assured that our tax dollars are being spent wisely. And when you put it in the consent agenda and people don't realize it's, what, what's going on, I think that it deserves to at least be mentioned outside of a consent agenda that you're approving a contract that exceeds the parameters of our laws and that whether or not the reasoning behind the waiving of of competitive bidding is justifiable or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody else, Marnie? Said Van, Van's not here, is he?
No.
Van? Okay.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, public comments closed. Council, any discussion, or do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen? Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes 4 to 1.
So, John, we took care of four to eight and 11 and 12, correct?
Correct, yep. So now we're on to tab nine, which was pulled. That is a resolution of the Village Council of Isle of Marauda Village of Islands, Florida, approving fiscal year 2023 to 2024 expenditures from Air Vac Inc., Dunright Pumps Inc., FJ Nugent and Associates, Fortline Waterworks, KB Vacuum Pump Solutions, and Sunbelt Rentals for the operation and maintenance of the village's wastewater collection and transmission system, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, authorizing waiver of competitive bidding, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. AJ, you got something you want to?
I just want to know, I guess, what, what concerns? These items are budgeted items that we had. These are vendors that we will, we will exceed that 25,000 as we go through the fiscal year. We wanted to make sure that we brought this up and had approval to hit those budgeted item, those budgeted numbers from the very get-go, so they weren't brought back one at a time.
Okay, so AJ, a lot of this stuff like Nugent, there's no, you, they're a sole source vendor. We can't use anybody else, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is anybody else on this list?
I mean. Let me go through the, the list of the vendors. You have, uh, Air Vac is a sole source, FJ Nugent is a sole source, Dunright Pumps does all of our emergency repairs on our electrical motors and our sewage pumps. KB Vacuums are, is the, the area manager that, that does all of our vacuum pumps, the same thing. Fortline Waterworks is a supplier of pipe material and valves and fittings and stuff. And then Sunbelt Rentals is what we have on for an emergency bypass pump until we get our upgrades at the MBK station.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all questions I have for you.
Henry, pull it.
Yes. My problem is, and it's ongoing, it has nothing to do with you personally, so you understand this, but I brought to the table some time ago, there was somebody here locally that could have provided us with a next-day delivery, anything we wanted, at a better price. And I think, in reference to the consent agenda, I have to go along with Sue on this because there, I guess I would reverse it, to have a consent agenda for everything. And rather than vote on something that, for the consent agenda, vote on something lacking the consent agenda. I mean, with me, I have to look at everything at a better price. And you, you can't be satisfied because that's the only guy that's gonna get you what you want in a timely manner. And I present you, present to you with somebody that was here, living here, and he says, "I can get it for you cheaper." And we never do that. I understand, you're, you're, you're taking a breath, I know you are.
I can explain that one for you right away. The, the one that we, just as I spoke last time when we talked about this, the supplier you're talking about does large, big projects. They're, they're a manufacturer. So as an example, when we first put the wastewater system in and we wanted to order pipe, and I'm ordering millions of dollars of materials, he's gonna give me a great price. If I, if I call him now and say, "Hey, I need two sticks of pipe that are 20 foot each,"
I understand what you're saying, but he's buying for my guy. My guy is to.
That's, that's who I'm talking about, your guy.
Yes.
Good, Henry, he cannot get a cheaper price on E1, the grinder products. There's no way, because E1 only sells the Nugent, who is their provider in this county. There's no way this contractor can get it and get it tomorrow and get it at a cheaper price.
Even as the, the pipe supplier, you're talking, I'm trying to, it's like going to a supplier and saying, "Hey, I need five screws." Instead of going to the hardware store, the local hardware store and getting your five screws, he's only gonna sell you 10 pounds of screws.
My guy is supplying your guy, don't you understand that?
Yeah, he's, he's the distributor. He's selling him, he's selling him hundreds of foot of pipe. "I need 20." He's selling him hundreds and thousands of foot of pipe.
He'll send you 20.
All right.
He will do that.
I, I've, I've spoken to him before, thank you.
Okay, it's up to you. I, I, I would put everything out to bid, I don't care what it is. Okay, call me wrong, that's okay. That's, that's, that's what makes the world go around. But since he offered to satisfy me that way, and he's the guy that's gonna supply your guy, any amount that you want, you don't, you don't have to buy a million dollars. That's all I'm saying, that's my, that's my intake on the situation. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
We, we, we speak to a lot of vendors, we constantly are in contact with and getting prices on, on certain items when we make purchases. These are typically, we go, we go with the best prices.
Okay. That's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Council, anybody else have anything for AJ? Okay. All right.
Move to approve?
What's that?
Or do we have to have public comment? Public comment.
All right, AJ, thank you. All right, public comment?
Sue Miller has signed up for this one.
My question, ooh, Sue Miller, Lower Matticombi, I'm sorry about that sound. I, I just don't understand the, the legal requirements in our purchase ordinance and the establishing positive working relationships to negotiate best pricing and availability of goods and services is not what the, the purchase ordinance says. The purchase ordinance says that you put stuff out for bid to find the best price, not by establishing positive working relationships. We like to see it on paper, someone making a proposal that, that is the lowest bid. And so this, we're talking about a, something that was in the consent agenda that's approving $410,000 worth of work, of materials, that I believe, I mean, it says that it's, you're waiving competitive bidding for all of these sources and a total of $410,000. It's not being put out for competitive bid because you've established positive working relationships. And, and that's not what the ordinance says, that's not what the law says. And so I'm just questioning whether that's appropriate or not. And, um, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sue. All right, uh, do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second? All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen? Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
The motion passes 4 to 1.
Okay, so.
We're now on to tab 10. That's a resolution of the Village Council of Isle of Marauda Village of Islands, Florida, approving work authorization number 15 with WSP USA Environment and Infrastructure, Inc. for Canal 116 Restoration Air Curtain Project Design and Permitting Services, authorizing village officials to implement the terms and conditions of the agreement, authorizing village manager to expend budgeted funds, authorizing village manager to execute the work authorization and providing for an effective date.
Marnie, we have any public comments signed up for this?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, so public comment is now closed. Peter?
Good evening, council. Just a couple of things I can add to this agenda item. So this is the air curtain that the village council agreed upon to move forward with at the request of the residents that you heard from during many meetings. This is being done to complement the backfilling project at Canal 116 that's going on right now. It's pretty cool. If you guys want to see Isle of Marauda's first backfilling, it's really cool. I was there today. Go down Ocean Drive, you're first left, you can see all the equipment working. So, yeah, it's pretty interesting. So, we did get the cost of the air curtain, full cost, design permitting construction included within our grant, Florida Key Stewardship dot grant. That's gonna cover, this is $32,000 cost for the design and permitting with WSP. I know there were some questions raised about location, a property to host the air compressors, right? It's actually pumps that move the air down to the curtain, that'll be at the front of the canal. So we do have, call it a verbal commitment from a property owner that's willing to host these air compressors on their property. And John Quick and his team are now working on a, an easement slash access agreement slash right-of-entry agreement that we will be hopefully executing with this property owner. And we've done these, these agreements before for these, for canal restoration projects. So we will be working on that as well.
Anybody have any questions for Peter? Okay.
So, um, I, the reason I pulled this was the, was that this, this resolution does not address the, the legal component, which would be to have some understanding with that property owner, that not only is there an easement, but there is an ongoing relationship that is happening so that this isn't a wasted effort, time, money, et cetera, on our part. And that, that expectations of that property owner, who is very generously allowing this to go on her property, is very clear about the, the long-term commitment that we're making on her property, with apparently nothing in it for her, except she gets a good canal. So, so just so that we're all clear and that the direction is clear to John, that that's, that we're interested in having that legal understanding.
Yeah, I'll, we'll be preparing the, I mean, we're in the process of preparing it, like, as we've done with others, to ensure that there's, the village has the right to be there, the right to access it, the right for maintenance. And, uh, that'll be done through an agreement that will be recorded, that will include easements and, and things like that.
Well, from what I understand, they all, all the neighbors got together and they want this, and that person said that Elizabeth was talking about, you know, said, were, were, they're willing to do it because they want the clean water in their canal.
Well, yeah, I mean, the guy on the end apparently said he wanted it too, and then he changed his mind, which is why this conversation was prompted to say that, you know, there's no need to move forward unless that understanding is in place.
Okay. Are we all okay to so, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Now, John, are we on to 13 now? That's the one, Henry?
Yep, we're on tab 13 with the resolution of the Village Council of Isle of Marauda Village of Islands, Florida, approving an agreement with RJF Design Consultants LLC to provide professional services and project management for the Founder's Park Pool Resurfacing Project, authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement, authorizing expenditures and providing an effective date.
Henry? You want Maria to si, to speak first, or you want?
Yes.
Hey, Maria, go ahead, give us.
Hi, yes, mayor and council. What you have in front of you is an agreement to move forward with RJF Design Consultants to provide professional services and project management for Founder's Park Pool Resurfacing Project. And also, it includes the renovation of our locker room and adding a staff lifeguard, uh, break room. So, um, as you're all aware, that the aquatic facility was completed in 2001. So right now, we're currently looking at 22 years for the aquatic facility. And we do know that, at this point, that resurfacing is needed. And also, um, the renovations and everything is something that needs to happen. But, um, we do need a consultant to help with this project. The consultant that we are looking at moving forward with has the expertise, has the experience, and has worked with multiple cities and counties on this type of resurfacing project. So, um, that's why this is in front of you, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer this.
Council, any questions for Maria? Okay. Henry?
Maria, you've answered some of my questions. Since you're bringing in some expertise with consultant.
Correct.
Since you're bringing in some expertise with consultant, well, I was not aware of until you said it.
Yes.
That was my problem.
Yes, um, obviously, um, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a project manager when it comes to this type of facility. And that's what we need, uh, an expertise, someone that has experience to walk us through the beginning of this project all the way to the end. It, um, is a very specialized project and we are looking for that help.
My problem was, we started for $100,000 and it went to $189,000 or something like that. And since you've provided with some he- help on the decision with a consultant, I'm happy.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Alright, Marnie, any public comment?
Van was the only one.
Okay, that, public comment's now closed. Counsel, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Mayor, second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Alright, Marnie, call the roll please.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
So we are on to tab 15, um, which is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, establishing a ride-sharing service advisory selection panel, defining its duration, composition, duties and responsibilities, providing the parameters of staff participation and providing for an effective date. I, I can, uh, address this one. Uh, this is a, a follow-up on the, uh, discussion that we've had with regard to the rideshare, uh, panel. This would create the panel, uh, creates their duties, um, so that they have the guidelines and the parameters as to what they are supposed to be doing. Uh, this includes, uh, the evaluation of, of the RFP. It, uh, creates a panel of five people. Uh, we were, I was just became aware today, we were, we received an email that there's seven people who are interested. Um, so if, if you, and I can give the names of, of the people that, that are in that, if you're all not already aware of who those are. So if you want to, uh, uh, include all seven, we would need, uh, if, and any motion would need to be with the modification, that it'd be for seven people instead of five. The other item is that I understand from staff that they are, uh, ready to go. They're chomping at the bits and they want to get going next week. In, this resolution was drafted, because this was drafted a couple of weeks ago, uh, to, before we had the names, for you all, for it to come back, for you all to appoint the members, uh, by a majority vote. Uh, I think we could do that again today, again, i- if, if that's the will of the council. Uh, again, I'll have to give you the names if you don't have them, uh, because like I said, we just, I just received this late this afternoon. And if you, if you wanted to do it that way, you could again do it by an amendment to the resolution to list out the seven people. If you would rather bring it back, uh, at a later date, uh, we can do that too. That's up to the council. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I don't know if you all have the names of the people. I'm happy, I'm hearing at least, I'm seeing at least one council member shake the head no. Um, I, so I'll give the names. It's...
Wait, how would we have received those?
I'm not sure. That's why, I just received it late this afternoon. It was an email from Mr. Lashley to, uh, to staff. So I wasn't sure if staff had emailed it, uh, to you. Probably, I figured probably not, and that's why I brought it up to brought, bring to your attention.
That would be my fault, because I sent it to Maria and to Ed and to maybe Mary Swainy. And I did not ask to send it to you guys, so I apologize. I was just trying to cover everything I could that I knew, so I apologize. It's seven people who have volunteered to go over the RFP.
Are we open for discussion here?
Go ahead.
So, so, did they fill out the form and the whole thing that, like, this is just like another committee, right?
It's, it, no, it's only gonna be, well, two meetings. One more meeting for the RFP to go over it, and then one to go over the bids. And then, then they dissolve, literally. So it's not a normal committee. It's an evaluation group.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, but I mean, in the interest of like, going along with not, you know, anyway, could we just, in the interest of time, can you send that email to us and then we'll vote on it on Thursday?
No, I wanted to vote on it tonight, so we can, we didn't need to advertise for 72 hours.
We have to what?
Well, they want to meet as soon as possible, so, well, I guess if you want to do it Thursday, do it Thursday. Never mind. Do whatever you guys want.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, we just want to play by the rules. I, this is the first I heard that we have seven names. And
My fault.
I, I don't, I, I mean, it's a panel, so I know panel's not a committee. Uh, and I, I think the vice mayor just explained, it's a, it's just two quick things and then they're dissolving. But I thought, I don't know why I thought this, but this, this would be, anybody who wanted to contribute would have an opportunity to serve, you know, in other words, just like we have on our committees. We put something out in the media, they can volunteer, and we pick them, and that's that. So it just seems like we, somebody may not know about this coming up quickly and hasn't had a chance to weigh in or decide if they wanted to participate or not. I'm not trying to slow it down, but it just seems like it's, we may be cutting somebody else, else out by going too fast.
We had the meeting where, anybody wants to join the committee, call me or call Jim. That was in, what, two months ago? A month ago?
Well, y- yeah, I mean, that was, you know, that was an informal thing we had in our discussion, but typically we put something on the website.
Do what you guys want to do.
We're not trying to frustrate it, I'm just saying, it's irregular.
Not frustrated, irritated.
Well, I'm good at both, I think, but at, at any rate, I just, if somebody else wants to play in this affair, so, I, I, that's all I'm suggesting. If you don't want to do that, I'm fine, whatever, whatever the majority likes. Someone else, it just seems like it's kind of happening under the radar partially. I mean, she's, she's right. It did, we did talk about it a couple of months ago, but I'm not sure if everybody was aware of the opportunity to apply to participate. That's all I'm saying.
So John, help us out. Can we do, I mean, is, can we do what the vice mayor wants tonight? Can we, can we, can we go ahead and vote on this, or?
Yeah, if you all want to. I mean, you can vote on it as presented. Um, you can vote on it, um, to increase it from five to seven. You can vote on it to increase from five to seven and include the names. Or you can wait to do it, um, on Thursday and, and do any, and do any one of those things as well on Thursday. Uh, it's, it's up to the council. If you guys want to deal with it today, um, you, you certainly can.
Alright, so let's take a, you want to do something today, or?
Well, so, um, sorry, would a compromise be to, I mean, again, I haven't even seen these names, so, to, uh, allow this committee, if, once we create it, allow anyone else to come on board? I mean, because again, I, I...
They've already met. Nobody else wants to come on board, but that's whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
That's, that's kind of part of the question I have, because they apparently are already meeting and talking about this.
Two of them out there in the audience.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't, doesn't the sunshine law apply for the meeting?
Until they form a committee.
Right now, they're just a group of interested, uh...
So, so can we say that anyone can join this committee? It doesn't matter how many people, it can be as many, this panel, it can be, can we just take away the numbers so that people, so that one, it's created and that anyone else can join?
I, I wouldn't...
Is that a way to do it?
I was gonna say, I wouldn't recommend that, because they're also gonna be your evaluation committee for the bids that are submitted. So you need to know who your evaluation committee is, who the people are, and...
Can't that be decided within the committee? Within this, within this panel of people, like, they, they narrow down whoever?
It could be, it's not drafted that way, but it could be, it could be revised that a subset of the, that the committee is open, well...
Where, where is the draft of that? I don't see that.
That, where's the dra-? Well, it's not included in there, but it does include in their duties that they are to evaluate the RFP. That is...
I mean, in an effort to move this forward, because it hasn't been publicly, I mean, has it been publicly noticed? Beyond the conversation?
Not until the committee's formed.
That's six E.
I, I would be happy if we, if we pause this, we, we say right now, if you're interested in serving, let us know right away with emails to any of the five of us. And then we can decide on, on Thursday night. That's just a two-day...
Yeah, can we do that? And so that we at least can read the names?
Yeah, I don't even know who's on there. I mean...
John, will you read the names?
Yeah, I can read them and I can, I can also forward them, uh, as well. The, the names that I have are Jim Lashley, Alina Davis, Judy Hall, Tom Raffinello, Deb Gillis, Sue Miller, and Maria Hamathoros, Hamelthoris.
I would, I would be fine with all seven of those, but I'd just like to see if someone else would like to join.
Okay, so what are we gonna do? Let's take a consensus here. Are we gonna, if we're not doing it tonight, are we doing it Thursday? What, what, what do you guys?
Well, why don't we just change the number and open up this committee to like, I don't know, 15 or 20 people? So that it's a round tw- well, then let's pause. Let's pause on it and do it on Thursday. I mean, because it hasn't been noticed. It's like we have these big committee thing and we noticed it and people had to apply and it was a pain in the neck for people and...
It's not a, really a committee. It's an evaluation group for two meetings.
It's like an RFQ, RFQ thing. Is that what we're saying?
No, no, you guys do what you want.
You know what? I don't care.
I don't know why everything's so confusing. I mean, we've been working on this for two months. And I didn't, sorry, I didn't say, send it to you guys, but whatever you guys want to do.
This kind of comes as a surprise. I think we would be all comfortable with it, uh, Thursday night, just digest it a little bit, and then someone listening or watching this later, if they're interested, they can contact us. And if they want to come in, they can come in too.
Okay, so Ed, can you, can we put, have this on there Thursday night, you or John?
It'll just hold over if you don't, that's the way we do it. It'll, um, it'll just hold over to Thursday if we don't, um, reach a decision tonight. And, um, I have the email with the names. I can forward it to everybody, um, to make sure you all have it too.
Is there a top number, like 10?
No, seven.
You want to make it seven and?
It is, yes, well, that's what we have.
All quits?
I, I'd be fine with that, but obviously there's some issues, so...
I'm happy with all to seven.
So am I. They've been working hard on this, so it's up to you guys.
What do you want to do, Henry? Do it now?
Yeah, sure.
So what do we need to do, John?
Well, if you guys want to do it now, um...
I'll have a comment first.
Yeah, if you want to do it now, at seven, I would need a, a motion to, uh, the, it would be a motion to approve with the modification that it go from five to seven members. Um, and then the question would be, uh, do you also want to approve the, um, the seven, the names of the, of those seven that I read off to be on that, uh, panel? If so, that would be included in the motion to modify to add that as well.
Alright.
No moves.
Okay, public comment's now open. Marnie?
Deb Gillis has signed up.
Deb Gillis, Isla Marada. So my comment on this is that it, it changed from five to seven. I don't care whether it's five or seven or whatever. If you get too many people, it gets complicated, of course. But, there was a citizens' meeting and there was more than, there, at the end of the meeting, there were seven of us. At the beginning of the meeting, there was like 10 or 11 of us, maybe. Uh, some of those people left. Some of us, at the end of the meeting, assumed that there would be five of us. And I didn't know that there was more people added to the committee to get to seven. Not that I'm opposed to that, it sounds like I am. But I know that there was other people at that meeting, that I don't know whether they really wanted to sit on the evaluation committee or whether they just wanted to participate that one day. I don't think that they were asked. That's to your point, or to Mark's point. I don't know that they knew that they needed to say, oh, wait a minute, I had to leave early, but I want it on the evaluation committee also. I don't know that. I, it's just a point.
Alright.
It does need to move forward and what Sharon was talking about, about 72 hours notice, there was a, an email put out. They were trying to put together a committee meeting, an actual committee meeting for Monday or Tuesday. We can't do it Wednesday, AJ can't do it Wednesday, so we can't do it Wednesday. It was being put out as a Monday or Tuesday. Well, the email came out late this afternoon to the potential committee members of trying to organize a day. Sorry. Poor Maria.
I went ahead and...
I'll share.
I went ahead and sent another email and said, if we can do the meeting without AJ, then we'll do it on the 15th. So right now, we're looking at Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday. I asked for the availability of the list of seven that I was provided, because my impression was that counsel had kind of made Sharon the lead on this. To, my impression has been that you've all been kind of deferring to Sharon. So, uh, Sharon asked Mr. Lashley to send me, send us the list. I just saw that as the next step, and then we're just trying to get ahead of the game, because it'll take some time to coordinate. So that's why we are where we are.
Alright.
I appreciate it, Maria.
Thank you, Maria. Alright.
Thank you.
I didn't think it'd be this confusing.
Alright.
So I didn't know about the second email. Sorry.
Thank you. Alright, Marnie, anybody else?
No.
Public comment? Okay, public comment's closed. Alright, John, what's the first thing that we, you just told us we had to do?
Uh, well, you could do it all as one. Um, and if, it would be a motion, if you wanted to move forward, it would be a motion to approve with the modification that the number be changed from five to seven people and that the resolution reflect the names of the people that I read off, uh, as, as those seven committee, uh, panel members.
Okay, alright.
Well, I move to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second, Henry?
Yes, second.
Alright, so got a motion, a second. Marnie, call the roll please.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Alright, um, Henry, I know you're saying, let's go. Are we, are we stopping right there?
What's left? Can we get it?
We have two more. We have nine, till 9:30. We have two more things.
Mr. Pekovic, I think, has a...
We, we have two more items. Can we get through those by 9:30?
Okay, give it a shot.
Well, let's go. Come on. Next, come on.
Okay, alright.
Alright, we're on to 16.
It's 9:10.
Yep, we're, tab 16 is an ordinance. And it's entitled, "An Ordinance of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, Calling for a Referendum Vote to Be Held With the Presidential Preference Primary Election on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, Providing for Submission to the Electors of Proposed Amendments to the Village Charter Pertaining to Term Limits, Providing for Placement on the Ballot, Providing for Requisite Ballot Language, Providing for Notice of Election, Providing for Authorization of Village Clerk and for Village Canvassing Board, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion of the Charter/Conformity of Amendment, And Providing for an Effective Date." Sorry, this is the, um, there was discussion of this, uh, two, I believe it was two council meetings ago, related to a, uh, potential term limit for council members. Currently, the charter calls for a term limit of eight consecutive years, uh, meaning you could serve for eight years, you could come off the, um, the council and then could come back on and serve for an additional eight years. Uh, the proposed draft, um, uh, would make it a, uh, eight, uh, total years in office, not consecutive. And it would be measured from the council member's first election to office of council member. Uh, so it would all, it would be looking backwards and it would include the, uh, those that, uh, served on the council before and would include the dates, uh, that they served on the council. So if somebody served on the council, uh, if this were to go forward to the electorate and the electorate were to approve it, if somebody were to have served on the council for eight or more years, um, previously, uh, the term limit would apply. If somebody were to serve for less, uh, those years would count and then they would reach the term limit whenever they get to the, the eight years.
Okay. Uh, Marnie, do we have any public comment?
Uh, yes, we have Deb Gillis and Angel Borden signed up for this.
Okay. Uh, public comment's open.
Deb Gillis, Isla Marada, again. Um, if you are choosing to move this forward, um, in March, uh, is a, um, what do I want to say? A skimpy vote time. If you really want to know what the public thinks of this idea and what they public, it should be in November. First of all, in the March election, um, I believe it'll be the only thing on as a whole item for Isla Marada. It is a one-day-only vote. It is not a mail vote. It is not a, um, early vote. It is you, not that we didn't used to do it, but it's, you have to go to the vote or to the polls to vote. If it's moved to November, then at least you get, uh, a lot more of the village participating in this. So I am, um, if you're planning on moving this forward, I would recommend that you put it on November, because I think the majority of the citizens, um, you can get a lot more of the citizens participating in this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Angel Borden, Isla Marada, you need to keep, you need to keep it for March and move it forward because then if it's worried about people not being able to vote by mail and things like that, then maybe the majority of the ones voting are going to be the people that are living here and the people that are going to be stuck with these other people and what's going on. So let's get it out there. It also seems very unfair to put it on a November ballot. If in case there is anybody that decides to run on the November ballot, then they're going to waste their money running on that November ballot if there's somebody that's in danger or has already gone over a term limit. This has been discussed for a long time. We've had a whole bunch of backdoor things going on, comments made of unfairness because people have locked up seats and been here for too long and carried things on and made side deals. It's time to stop that. It's time to act like we're in the real world, end it, end it, promote it, and get our locals out to vote in March.
All right, thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
No.
Okay, public comments now closed. Counsel, any conversation?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So I'll keep it civil. This is obviously targeted at me and at Deb Gillis and a couple of others. I don't care what the rest of you say. It's easy to read between the lines, but that's okay, you know? That's, that's, you're right. That's the law. That's the way it works. Last time, I think the vice mayor said it's up to the people to decide, and I, and I believe in that too. As Deb, Deb pointed out, if you really want to know what the majority of the people think, because I know you like surveys, I like surveys too, why not give the, the maximum number of people the opportunity to decide what they want instead of kind of a lopsided, low-turnout event that we're going to have in, in the fall or in the spring? It's a Republican-only primary, so chances are the vast majority of the people that show up at that are going to be Republicans. And they may all like the way things are, so they may not, but it just seems to be, be more democratic to give everyone who is most likely to come to the polls an opportunity to do that. And it's a presidential election in the fall, which generally provides a better turnout, turnout. So if you're really interested in what the people want to do, giving the maximum amount of people that opportunity to do that makes the most sense from that perspective. But it, it's, it's kind of hard to sit here and, and, you know, just let this blow by knowing that it comes from a source of, of, of political control of, well, I'll just say it very bluntly. I, I can't be beat, I, I wasn't beat at the polls the last two times, so it's going to be a political assassination by charter. And if that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be. But I'm, I'm not going to just sit here and be quiet and pretend that this is not happening. So I think it's a poor idea. I think you're depriving a greater men, number of the voters of an opportunity to get the, to provide their vote and so you'll have a real idea of what the people really want to do instead of something that has pretty clear political connotations. To my knowledge, there has not been a groundswell of, of, of interest in this. This came about because a small number of people decided it was a way to eliminate serious competition from the next election. And it may be, and you, you may have hit, hit the jackpot, so, but that's okay. That's the way it works. So I had to say my piece, and I'm finished, so we'll see where it goes.
So if you, if you want to say that this is directed at you, which it's not, it's directed at, look at, watch television and look at the Senate and the House of Representatives. They're all two-hundred years old. So this isn't directed at you, but, so let's just say we do put it on the November ballot and you want to run again. How does that affect you? Because what happens the day of the election, they say to get rid of you?
Well, I don't think that you can affect somebody who's, you know, I mean...
That's a reason, okay.
So I would, you know, yeah, so now you know.
There was a reason.
I would have an opportunity.
Always got a reason, yeah.
I would, I would have an opportunity, and that would be fair. So the people could decide to limit those in the future and those who run. I mean, if they, it would be inconsistent to do it both ways.
You are always one step ahead. That's pretty good.
Well, I, I do my homework most of the time.
Yeah, you sure do. Okay.
But, you know, why, why would you want to limit someone's choice?
It's, well, it's a choice that the people decide if they want to see you or anybody else who wants to run more than eight years. It wasn't directed at you, and I know Elizabeth is the one who did bring this up. Somehow it's been pinned on me.
I didn't say it's you.
Well, whatever. I'm just saying that it should be up to the public if they want to see the same people because with the same people, you get the same attitudes, the same thoughts, the same patterns. It's a, just like Elizabeth wanted more money to bring new people in. It's a chance for turnover. It wasn't directed at you, and Deb was mad at me about it too, so...
I'll just explain that...
But I see your reasoning now for November.
If you're trying to attract people to run for office and they know that their reward for eight years of service is a lifetime ban from ever doing anything good for their community again...
How much more do you want to do to this?
Let, let me finish, please. Thank you. If, if they know that their, their reward for this is an insulting lifetime ban for having given hours and hours of their time to the devotion of the service of the public at the expense of spending time with their families, at, you know, reading all kinds of nasty things in the newspaper about you. I mean, it's just, it's just very difficult to accept the fact that this is the reward that I get for my service here in the village. And if that's the message you want to send...
It's not directed at you.
Well, I, I just, I'm sorry, it is.
No, it's not.
It, it's, it's, you're not going to manipulate the narrative to say it's something, anything other than that.
Come on.
It's a hundred percent directed at me and, and at, and at Deb Gillis to a degree as well.
And Chris Santi and who else did it?
Right. So, so why would you want to deny the people the opportunity to put somebody in office who have the most experience and, and the most knowledge about how the village government works? You may remember that we had a vacancy on the office, and I think it was when Cheryl Meads resigned, that the council decided to appoint Chris Santi, who was a former council member, and he did so on a short term because he agreed that he was not going to run for office. And that, that was a very valuable thing, that a resource for the council to take advantage of because he filled the gap. He knew how to take over. He knew how to run the village. He had experience to do that. That, that could never happen again. It may be that someday, some old timers like me may have something valuable to contribute, and I just don't understand why you would want to deny the public the right to make that decision.
Then I'm going to make it in March.
It would be fine if you put it in November, and I wouldn't be so upset about it, but the fact that it's done in March is, is definitely, spotlights the fact that it's directed personally at me. And if we're going to start making rules and laws that are based on attacks on individuals, that's a very slippery slope to slide down, and I hope you take that into consideration.
It's slippery for you to be accusing somebody who never directed it at you.
I'm not accusing...
Your name never even came out of my mouth.
I'm not accusing you, but if you're supporting it, then you obviously know what's going on.
No, I'm supporting it because I don't want to see the same people.
Let's, let's, let's leave it alone, but Henry, you want to say something about it?
I feel for you. I know what it's like personally. Believe me, I do. No matter what I've done in the past, it doesn't count. It's unfortunate.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I'm going to say something too because I believe, my personal opinion, it should go to November. This thing in March is, that's what makes it look like the target, is that because it's, it's being in March, so nobody can run in November. That, that's, it was all, it's all targeted. I see people in the audience back, laughing back there because, you know, it's not, that's not, like, like the Monroe County mosquito control, they just changed it a few years ago. You get to run three, four-year terms because there was a guy in there for twenty years, okay? It's actually my son that took him out, all right? Been there for twenty years, but now you get to serve three, four-year terms and you're done and you can't come back and run again. So you get twelve years. That's what they get, all right? And I thought that's what we were trying to do with eight, but, you know, at eight years, but to put this in March, to push this thing in March, that, I don't, I don't agree with it either because you don't have that many people voting in March, all right? You don't have, it's, it's not in the presidential election, but you know what? I, hey, I, I think it's, I think it's really poor that, that's just my personal opinion. I'm only one of five, but I think it's poor. I don't care. I'm not saying Deb, Mark, anybody. I just think it should go on the November election. Before Deb ever said that or Mark ever said a word, I think it should be in November to be fair to get more people to vote on it. And hey, if the people vote, not that it's changed then, it's changed. If, if that's what the residents want, but to, even in the village, we don't get that many votes anyways. There's not that many votes, but I've said my piece and I'm going to let it go. So we've already had public comment, so do I hear a motion?
Excuse me. I didn't say anything.
You didn't? Okay, sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. I'll make sure I do. Look, I know a lot of people are, are very entrenched in this political world that happens in Isla Marada, and, you know, I think this, this idea is a good one. It is not directed at anyone personally. What I have noticed is that what happens in this town is actually a reflection of what's happening at the national level. So we see people like Nancy Pelosi and Dianne Feinstein and Mitch McConnell, who have served for a very long time. It's a problem. And, and, and we could go on in an analysis of what's happening at the national level and put it right down into this, this little town and make so many changes. So I, I think this is one area that we can fix. Does it need to be in March? Does it be, need to be in November? I, I don't even know if that makes a difference, but term limits make sense in most places.
They, they do. They do. And, and you know what? This, this is for the people to decide. That is going on, you know, the referendum, so let the people, the residents decide.
I think that's what we're trying to do here.
I understand.
Yeah.
If they really don't want us to serve, they have a chance every two years to get us out. So that, that's very different than some of the things. I mean, I'm not a hundred and fifty years old. I'll be sixty-five if I decided to run in the fall. And I, I, I think that, I think that this is definitely, I, I, I'm going to just say it to your face. I don't believe when you say this is not targeted at me. It a hundred percent is. And this is going to further divide our community. It's going to further divide our council. It's not going to be a positive factor for any manager candidate to look at. He knows that this kind of thing goes on and that it's, there's personalities involved in this and these attacks. And I can't see our community and our council working together any better when it's a critical time for us to try to heal ourselves and come back together. That's the way you see it. I respect your opinion, and you vote your way and I'll vote mine, and we'll see what happens.
And, and I respect your opinion as well, Mark. And another, another take on this is that when we have, when we act with the spirit of rotation, then actually we can empower a manager to make decisions based on good policy rather than having to, to play politics. I mean, we could do better for our community. This is, again, this doesn't, anyway, that's all. And we all have our own opinions about it.
So, Marnie, I mean, do I hear, do I hear a motion? We, we're going to vote on this, right?
Yeah.
All right. I need to have a motion and a second. Okay? If, if there's no motion and no second, John, it doesn't carry, correct?
Correct. It, it needs to have action to move forward.
Yeah, well, I make a move to approve it. And I don't know if we've had enough discussion to decide whether to, to change it to a November election. I, I don't have a problem with that. Have, have we had enough discussion on that? I don't think it's going to make anybody happier. I think there's still going to be acrimony over the fact that term limits make sense for any functioning board. I mean, across, we all, we, that's undeniable. So I don't think that anyone's going to be ha, less, more or less happy depending on whether we do it in March or November. Am I hearing anyone say that?
I'd, I'd say November, Henry.
November is definitely, takes the personal attack element out of it.
Then I would move to approve this with a November election and so that we can all be happy.
Okay, all right. Do, do I hear a second?
I'll second it. Get it over with.
Okay, all right. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
No.
And the motion passes three to two for a November ballot.
Okay, we're on the tab seventeen.
So tab seventeen is a motion to consider the appointment of David Petkovich to the Nearshore Water Regulation Citizen Advisory Committee. Peters, and Peter's here on that.
Elizabeth, thank you for...
Sure. So as the liaison to this committee, I did receive an application from David Petkovich to, that was for the Nearshore Water Committee, and obviously this came in under two weeks ago, so beyond the deadline we established for committee selection and committee approval. So the way we thought to handle this was just to bring it to the council as a motion to appoint Dave, who was a former member of the committee after the deadline had passed.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Counsel, any comments?
Okay, I'm going to approve. Oh, sorry.
Well, I want to...
Discussion, sorry.
Are you done with the public?
Not yet. We're, we're, we're just...
Well, then we can't take the vote yet.
Yeah, no, no. Right now, I'm just saying, is there any, do we want to discuss this? Because we had set it up that it was, you know, people had to apply at a certain date, and they, if they didn't, then it's, it's done. Now, if we're going, my feelings are that we have to open, if for even, for other committees, we have to open it up for, for all the committees if they're, okay, and do it at another time. So that's just my personal opinion, is that we, 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 we had a deadline for a reason, and now we're coming back again with another, you know, there we go again, making another exception.
But there are vacancies on the committees.
I, I understand that, but let's open it up for any, any committee that has vacancies.
Yeah. I, I thought...
And we do it, we set a date, a date, time, a certain time, and we do it then.
Yeah, I, I think that...
Do you still want to make the motion?
I'm with the mayor on that. I'm just agreeing with you on that.
Vice Mayor?
I mean, I think if we have vacancies on the committees, then, and we didn't have that, we didn't expect that, so it's something now that we're dealing with. Yeah, if there are vacancies, apply and come on board. I mean, maybe the guy was out of town or the next person was out of town, you know? But he fill out the application, bring it forward, you know, and move on. That's how I'd like to handle that.
Final question.
Okay, wait, we got public comment, Marnie? Anybody?
No one has signed up for this.
Public comments closed.
Call the question.
I think it's the slippery slope. We're bending the rules again. If we're going to open it for one, we open it for all.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, but we, there are no rules about, what, we didn't anticipate the vacancy component, so there is no rule about vacancy. That, we didn't ever address it, but, so, I mean, I don't, there's no rule that we bent because we didn't make one.
Maybe we should just pause this and talk about it on Thursday about how we can resolve this vacancy issue that's, we now discovered. You know, what do we do?
Did you, did you just move to approve?
I will, I don't think I did, but I will move to approve.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
Second.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
No.
Okay, that motion passes three to two.
That's it for today. We have some land use items for Thursday, but that's everything on the agenda for today.
Need to move to adjourn. I move to adjourn.